Jeff Carson, I'll be serving, I'll be serving as chair of tonight's meeting. Have the following members present with us tonight. Byron Torres, the Planning and Urban Design Department, Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Planning and Urban Design. We also have Jeff Conway with Unified Government Legal Counsel on the following. So on a Board of Zoning Appeals Commissioners are present tonight. Commissioner Duane Beth, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Jake Miller, Commissioner Joseph Strauss, and Commissioner Aaron Ward. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to Secretary Parker, and she will read the opening statement on how we'll handle the meeting tonight.
We would like to welcome those participating by telephone, Zoom, or in the commission chamber to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom or are present in the commission chamber. And Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Board members use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak. And after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in the commission chamber, please state your name before speaking once Chairman Carson recognizes you. For those members of the public attending the meeting virtually this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@ycoKCK.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-third majority vote of the board. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of people who are in support or in opposition that did not speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation. The board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff stipulations unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, our first application is BOZA 2022-046. Bob Johnson with Pulcinelli for property at 4601 Rainbow Boulevard. At this time, does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Strauss has his hand raised?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Strauss.
I was just letting you know that Sister Karen Jones is trying to get in as well, Ms. Parker, I sent her the link.
Okay.
Yes, and I've sent her a link as well. So Janet, you might watch for her.
I will.
Mr. Johnson, are you in the audience? Go ahead and, when we call your case, if you go ahead and make your way up to the microphone, that way we can get started as soon as you get up here. Thank you. Good evening. Go ahead, give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project.
Yes, Bob Johnson with Pulcinelli Law Firm, 948th Place, Kansas City, Missouri. Here also with Blair Tanner, Aaron Mesmer, Amy Grant, Huff Projects is also working on this application. Chair and members of the board, thank you for having us here. Maybe a bit confusing as to why we're here, but let me help explain that. I think that's probably the most important part of the presentation here tonight. We are merely here to correct a procedural flaw in the notice with the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting that we appeared at on October 10th. All that was missed in that notice that the city sent was to the owner of the Woodside Village Development directly to the south of the project site proposed here and the city of Westwood. Both of those parties were fully aware of the application. All other required parties received notice and had the opportunity to be heard at that time. There was thus no prejudice impacting the prior result as the, as a result of the notice error. Regardless, the statute dictates that all parties within the 200-foot buffer zone receive notice. Thus, we're back before you merely to fix that notice flaw. And so we can comply with the statute and have the variance re-approved, we would request, in the same manner it was approved last time. I'm sure the body recalls that this exact application was in front of you October 10th. We received a unanimous approval of the variance request at that meeting. Not a thing has changed in the application since that time. Again, nearly we're here for the procedural notice flaw correction. And in respect to this and the body's time in the full agenda tonight, I'll be very brief. I will go through just the, the variance request just to get it on the record, but that's it. That's the only reason that we're here. So, and of course, the variance decision is based upon the five narrow factors. I will not go through the full presentation on the project as we did at the last Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, as you might recall. If there's something, though, that the board would like to know or ask or information I don't provide, but that comes up in public comment, I would ask that you do address me on that. I'm happy to answer anything that you deem relevant, but I don't want to be overly inclusive, include a bunch of information unrelated to the direct variance request.
Thank you.
With that, Byron, if you would go to the next slide. As the body is aware, the project is located at 47th and Rainbow in the northeast corner. It borders the southern border of Wyandotte County and is directly adjacent to a sister project, Woodside Village to the south. If you could go to the next slide, you can see that pretty well here, county line is shown. I'll show you in a minute, but you can see that county line bisects directly the, the shared access drive between the project site and the sister project to the south. Again, that's the, that's the related affiliate owner that didn't receive notice. If you could go to the next slide. You can see the project site here with the site plan overlaid and then Woodside Village to the south. The shared access drive, you can see pretty clearly on this between the two properties. And that is really the subject of the variance requests, as you might recall. If you can go to the next slide, please. Okay, I'll just focus on this slide for the moment and explain the variance request. As it relates to the rear yard setback. So the southern border of the, the project there. Has a rear yard setback variance request related to it. That is simply, again, as you may recall, so that we can use 47th as the shared access drive between. Project to the south and the project to the north on the project site we're proposing here. That access drive is 47th, it is currently built. It is split by the county line. And so, of course, when the project in Westwood was built several years ago, there was coordination with the UG as to that access drive. And there was anticipation at the time that the access drive would be used to not only access the project to the south in Westwood, which was constructed. But a future garage on this project site. As is presently proposed, you can see the dark gray area, that's the garage. That is the sole reason why we need the variance. It is a benefit to all, frankly, because we moved our parking off of 46th. You may remember discussion about that. It was previously an entrance ingress egress onto 46th. We move it directly south to a butt, that 47th drive aisle, so that that is the only point of access ingress egress into our project. If we didn't, if we didn't have a variance, we'd have to move that garage north and east to increase the setback on the rear yard, which doesn't make sense or provide a benefit to anyone. Extensive conversation with the community, it was requested that we take the, the ingress egress off 46th. We did that, so it's a benefit to the community, it's a benefit to the project in that we can use. The constructed shared access drive as our only point of ingress egress today in, in the future when the project is constructed. And so it, it would actually create a. A less beneficial condition if the variance was not proposed, if that makes sense. So with that, I'll stand for questions. I can provide any other information about the project that would be helpful. Maybe one more slide, Byron, I will show you the 3D rendering showed this last time, of course, again. You can see that a retaining wall was built. To put the parking garage on the south, again, in anticipation of, at the time and in coordination with the UG for a similar. Wall to be built to the north where that drive aisle would enter into the two parking garages, one to the north, one to the south. And that's, that's the extended presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from commission members of the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please come forward. We do have testimony from the earlier meeting, so go ahead. Name and address, please.
Dan Thompson, 4514 Francis Street. As you may, may look familiar to you, this is probably the fifth time coming to one of these meetings to support. I will let you know, we have a lot of other supporters that couldn't make it, that they want me to speak for them as well. Being that this is the fifth time to have them to come in in person. But I just want to give you a quick take of how I feel about the project. I live about four houses away from the project. I'm very close. I think there's a few things that needs to be aware. We've gotten over 40 support letters that I personally have received and gone out and talked to neighbors. There's been over 63 support letters in total. Our neighborhood is not that large, it's a high percentage. The majority of the neighborhood is for this project. We think it can help the sustainability of the neighborhood. We think it'll help having more of a family aspect to the neighborhood. We personally, I think it's going to help on home values, just keeping the area, you know, up to a certain part that, that, that we've been headed in the right direction. A couple of things, some of the folks that are not for this project. Couple of things I want to add that, that Woodside and Blair and his team has done. Some people thought there'd be a traffic problem on 46th. Well, we done it, they did a traffic study and it proves that there's not a traffic issue. I personally walk 46th almost daily and with my five-year-old son as well. And it's so tight and narrow now that emergency equipment can't really get through there. And there's no sidewalks, and this would be a huge improvement. There was some talk about affecting houses with shade, where there was a shade study done. And it affects a couple houses, not more than two, and it's a very small effect during the winter months. Some people said it's too big, so Blair and his team has come back, lowered it. They said we need more landscaping, they've put in a pocket park. They said 46th Street needs to be wider, so they've set the building back, they've widened the street, they've added a very wide sidewalk. They said they don't want trash on 46th, they took the trash component out of it. Delivery trucks, they added an extra drop-off lane, so there's two now. And people talked about during the construction, whether or not there'd be equipment or people using that street to get to the job site. They've, they've said that they, they would make sure the contractors don't use that. So anyway, my, my point is, it seems like the goalpost keeps getting moved for the people that don't want this project. Because every objection, most of them have been made, they've made adjustments, and they're working with the neighborhood. And I think the final plan is exactly what we need, and I hope that you guys felt yes on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to just reiterate that the reason we're back is due to a procedural error for some people that were not noticed on the Johnson County side of the project, so that's why we're back. So that's, where nobody's moving the goalposts, there were just some people that were not noticed that need to be given the opportunity.
Well, when I say goalposts, to clarify, that the people don't want.
Sure, I understand, but that's the only reason we're back here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jerry Greer, I live at 4503 Francis Street, that's about seven houses away from the project. I'm here today in support of the Woodside Village Rosedale project. It's my opinion that Blair and his team have worked very hard to accommodate our community's concerns. And I firmly believe that the development plan will make marked improvement in the Spring Valley neighborhood. I encourage you to approve the Woodside project, and I look forward to having new neighbors who appreciate the improvements just as much as I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor or in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Becky Paulson, I live at 4418 Francis Street. It's about a block and a half from the project. And I'm speaking in opposition, I'm also speaking on behalf of several neighbors who have carefully looked at the requesting zoning variance. So this request requires a rear yard setback to be not less than the building's height. The zoning appeal you're being asked to consider would violate that setback by 40 feet along the five-story portion and 78 feet along the seven-story portion. Kansas State statute. Requires that the Board of Zoning Appeals has authority to grant a variance when all, my emphasis is on all, of the required conditions as listed in the statute have been met. While we believe there's an argument to be made that all five are not, three of them are most problematic, and I'm going to speak to two of those. The first is that the variance requested arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zone or district and which is not created. By an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant. We find that the requested variance does not arise from a condition unique to the property. And that it is created by the action of the property owner applicant because they're proposing a building too large for the size of the property. The second is that the strict application of the provisions of the zoning ordinance of which the ordinance is request, of which the variance is requested. Will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. There is no unnecessary hardship upon the property owner here. The condition is completely created by the size of the development itself and under the control of the property owner to create it or alleviate it. So in summary, the argument for the uniqueness of the property in the first stated condition and the unnecessary hardship. And the second stated condition are both created by the owner developer and are not inherent to the property itself. The underlying problem being that the proposed apartment building is too large for the size of the property, which is completely within the control of them to resolve without a zoning variance. Approving variances of this nature sets an unwanted and unwarranted precedent for future development in Roseville and Kansas City, Kansas. And therefore, we're asking that you not approve it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Chris Steiner, 4529 Francis Street, KCK. I would draw attention for Jeff Conway, the city legal staff, it's KSA 12-759. Bob Johnson says, I think, quote unquote, you need to follow the statutes. Well, yeah, you do. So I would, I would encourage city legal to look at what KSA 12-759 specifies. There are five points that a planning commission must follow when approving or just approving plans. You guys have to follow the law. It's not your opinion, it's not your choice, follow the statutes, okay? Becky has just referenced item A on 12759, I'm going to reference B. Quote, "The granting of permit for the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents." Adjacent property owners includes people directly across the street, which would be my home and several other neighbors. And we will be in shade several months of the year in the wintertime due to the size of this building. And I would just reiterate what Becky said, A and B, KSA 12759, A and C. Both put the, the burden on the commission to find why the builder, the developer can't live within the existing ordinances. Well, if you build the building smaller, you don't need variances. They've chosen, this was not happenstance, it was a choice. In my opinion, it was an error, they designed a building that is too big for that footprint. And they designed a style with this parking garage, you can see it right there in the video, and their open green spot. If they didn't build the building that way, if they built one-layered parking on the bottom, like most of the apartments in the crossroads or in Southern California. The building would not have to be so high, and we would not be objecting, and they wouldn't need a variance. But they chose a design style which forces their building to be higher than it needs to be. That's their choice, but the state statute doesn't recognize or allow a planning commission to go with that. The, the property, the underlying ground does not force a five or six-story building, their design style does. Read what the statute says, it's pretty clear, counselor. And I would just reiterate, as an adjacent property owner, we just don't want to be in the shade. And we also don't want that many delivery trucks driving down our street. We think it hurts our home values, and I don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You will be seeing, we've had some design schematics that a talented person drew using their dimensions, the dimensions from their plans, what this building will look like. And it's larger than a US Navy destroyer and taller than a US Navy destroyer that will be parked on top of that parking lot. So it might be a nice-looking building that's been a larger than a US Navy destroyer on the high seas right now. So it's, it's a rather large building, it's too big for the site.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? I'm going to go to online participants. Yes, sir.
Gil Pentar, 4178 Cambridge, Hanover Heights. We're passing out some views right now that we'll be showing digitally here. But a couple of things I'd like to point out is that, you know, I want to, it's not that I want to correct the chair, but. While there was a notification issue that everyone agreed upon. This restart of this new case, and it's the same case number, but. More information can be submitted to you for your consideration. And so what we've attempted to do with the neighborhood is focus on the five criteria, statutory criteria that's been brought up. In summary, this truly is a self-created hardship. They've applied for R6 zoning, which has no height limit. And because of that zoning, there are 75-foot setbacks that are required because of the height of the building and 40-foot setbacks. That are required because of the height of the building. If they lowered the building to four-story or three-story, then the, then the setback would change in R6. But there are other zoning districts, R5, R4, R3, that they could have applied for and certainly complied with, with the proper design. So it's their self-created hardship. That they can't comply with the setbacks, and they're before you tonight for two setback variances. Both, both of them on the south side of the project, 75-foot, which is zero setback, and another 40-foot for the five-story building. The last, the point, the other point I was wanting to make was that. Any mention in their response to the five criteria, the applicant's response that mentions the city of Westwood. Any response that mentions the city of Westwood should not be a bearing of your consideration tonight. Because we have on the record no legal document that shows a position that the city of, of Westwood has taken either way. Either in favor or in opposition. And what I'd like to do is just show you a massing study, just very quickly here, of what the seven-story on Rainbow. Looks like next to the dentist's office off of 46th Street. And then the five-story projection that goes past Francis. Next slide. This is looking straight down 46th Street. You can see the bulk, and again, this isn't a depiction of their building, but it is a two-scale drawing of the shape of their building. And the height and dimensions of their building from the building plans they've provided us. Next slide. This is a view from within the neighborhood with Francis dead-ending into their five-story building. Showing the bungalow houses in the neighborhood that are impacted by this five-story building. This is all to scale. This is, this is taken from Google Earth. This is, our presentation tonight shows that. It is way out of proportion, way out of scale for the neighborhood. That's what these graphics are intended to show. Next slide. This is the slide that, that shows Francis Street, what, what you're looking at when you look at the building itself. And those little sticks that you see at the end of the, of, of the drive of the street, those are people. And there's a car right there, so it gives you a scale of the massiveness of this five-story building. Next slide. And this is a view looking west with the houses and the five-story building. Truly, I don't want to, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words, I think. And the reason why we're showing you these today, we want to implore you to look at the criteria. And tell us that this is not an overbuilt situation and that their rights to have 75-foot variances are correct.
Mr. Pentar, Mr. Pentar, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you have less than one minute to complete your presentation.
Okay, so in a nutshell. The statute requires that all five of those criteria, all five of them be met. Not just one, not two or three. You all may agree that maybe they meet four, four of them. But if you don't agree with one of the criteria. You can't approve it by state law. You're a quasi-judicial board, totally different than Planning Commission. And those are the rules as pointed out by Chris Steiner.
We'll, we'll address that with legal counsel, but I do want to ask you one question before you step away. Has anything changed in this proposal since last month? Is this the same proposal that you all spoke to last month? Has anything at all changed with it? Have they increased the size of the building, the height of the building? Thank you, that's all I need from you. Thank you. Anyone else? Let's get to the mic. I need you at the microphone if you're going to speak. Okay, you need your name and address, please, and then we're going to go to the online guests.
Yes, okay, so my name is Mackenzie Gabriel. I live at 448 Cambridge Street. And, and I am here just to, in, in support of this project. I've seen it come from the very beginning, and I've seen it go through its changes. And I think that we've really met some, some concerns of the neighbors. And I feel like we've really done our best to listen to what my neighbors have to say. And I think it can only bring progress and, you know, value to my, our neighborhood if this project does get a vote of yes, so. I'm here in support and would love a vote of yes.
Mr. Chairman, I did not catch her name and address for the record.
Sure, I can say that again.
Please.
Sure, I can spell it too. So my first name is Mackenzie, that's M-C-K-E-N-Z-I-E. My last name is Gabriel, G-A-B-R-I-E-L. And I, I live at 4448 Cambridge Street.
Okay, thank you very much.
I've lived there for over a decade now.
Thank you very much. Going to go to our, if you're going to speak, I need you at the microphone or you're not going to be called off. Okay. This will be our last in-person speaker, we're going to online.
Right.
Go ahead, name and.
Bill Siggin's, 4406 State Line Road, in opposition. Speaking today on the KSA 12, you know, dash 759, just reiterating the state application of the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Of which variance is requested will continue or constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. The property can be developed in compliance with city codes and regulations of UG government, as with similar acreages in KCS. Now, there is no unnecessary hardship other than the one created by the applicant, was, is basically has their own desire to overbuild the acreage and the choice of the R6 zoning. The conditions have not been met. Again, they should not be given a variance, and they should not be given approval to build. The other aspect to this I would like to bring up is when you talk about folks that are in. That are not in opposition that would like to see this built. I would also like to bring up the fact that some of them are, of course, property or landlords to many of the properties in the neighborhood. So when you talk about these 60-odd people that have been signed, that are, you know, happy to have this built. I would like to actually ask the question of how many of those people, do those landlords currently have as tenants? And did those landlords actually go to those tenants to get those signatures? And did those landlords actually go to those tenants to get those signatures? And those tenants felt they had to sign in approval? Or basically, I just question how many of them, when there was about eighteen locations inside that area that are under landlords that have spoken in, you know, positive towards this build? So I question that as well.
Unfortunately, I can't get you an answer, but I apologize for that. Okay, we'll now go online to Rose. I'm sorry, I don't have a last name, but Rose, I will need to have you give us your full name and your address, please.
Yep, my name is Rose Isles and I live at five-oh-six North Fourth Street in Kansas City, Kansas. I actually have lived on both Cambridge and Francis earlier in my life. And I'm very familiar with the project and I stand with the folks against this development. It's too big for that spot.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now go to Erin Strika. I'm sorry, Erin, I forgot to give you permission to talk. Go ahead.
Thanks, Commissioner Carlson. This is Erin Strika with Rosel Development Association at fourteen-oh-three Southwest Boulevard. Here today just to convey RDA support for the neighborhood presentations tonight. I've heard from a lot of supporters. I've heard from a lot of, a lot of opposers. And the general theme I've heard from the supporters is that people want to see landscaping, a sidewalk, more housing in the neighborhood. And from opponents that they also want those things, but this particular project is just too tall with the unlimited height and I R six zoning and the five stories adjacent to or across the street from one and two-story single-family homes. I just want to say that a huge amount of neighborhood brainpower has gone towards this project. And I really appreciate the commission hearing everybody so many, many times. And I just, I want to say again that RDA opposes this project because we still think it's too tall and the goals of the folks who are supporting it can be accomplished by a project that better follows the guidelines of the master plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll now go to Jerry Mulder.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Jerry. Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Jerry Mulder. I live at thirty-one South Hollick Street. I am in opposition of this project. I have been watching it develop as our project on five-oh-five Central develops. They're facing the same battle that we faced. It is too large for the, the, the property size. And these developers are just coming in and they're just trying to maximize their profits at the expense of surrounding cottage homes, single-story and two-story homes. It looks like a land yacht or a battleship in the middle of two-story, single-family homes, and it is not appropriate for the neighborhood, as is five-oh-five Central eight-story high building.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll now close the public portion meeting. We'll go back to developer. Any concerns that you want to address that were brought up by the neighborhoods? And I would, go ahead, let's, go ahead and start with that.
Didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No, go ahead.
Chair members, I'll keep it very brief. Again, in respect of the only reason we're here, to fix the procedural notice flaw. I will stand on staff's recommendation for the five variance factors in the statute. Won't go through each one, but happy to, if you'd like me to walk through each one in our case for each one. But staff has made that case very eloquently in their staff report, which has been this consistent position they've taken the entire, almost year we've been doing this in, in consideration of this variance. I'm also happy to show renderings for the project. I can do that also when we fix the procedural notice error for the rezoning in the planning commission meeting. Certainly with context and with the architectural design and features in those renderings, it does not look like what you just saw in that depiction. It's not one concrete block. Certainly does not look like a battleship placed on the site either. As you know, and as we've seen before, it is extensive and very give and take process architecturally to design a project that fits into the neighborhood and has design features which articulate and break up the facade and, and so forth. So happy to show those if the, the body would like to see those. But again, we're here to fix a procedural error. As you said, Chair, nothing has changed in the application. I think two points would address essentially the summation of what the opponents brought up tonight with regard to their arguments. Frankly, any height of a building would still require this rear yard setback variance. You have to have that garage flush to Forty-seventh and, and able to, to enable the access from Forty-seventh. Doesn't matter if it's one-story, two-story, twelve-story. You need to have that rear yard setback so that you can have the access come from Forty-seventh, which is what everyone wants. Secondly, there are unique conditions to this site, not only the site layout and just the, the dimensions of the site itself, but the fact that we're on the county line, we would not plat this as two separate lots. If we weren't on the county line, we wouldn't be here asking for a variance to begin with. There would be no variance needed because the setback is against our own property. There is no prejudice or problem created with regard to the adjacent landowner to the south. That's an affiliate of the applicant, again, as you know. So I believe that addresses in summation the entirety of those arguments. Happy to go further if you have questions for me. But again, we're here for one specific, distinct and discreet reason, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from commission members or does anyone want to see the rendering put back up on the screen from the developer? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so thank you. We'll go ahead and go to staff and get their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant, as he stated, was coming back for a procedural issue related to the notice that was sent, not sent initially to the city of Westwood, both city of Westwood and then the property owners to the south. So that's why we're back for you tonight. The application itself has not changed since you last heard in October. It's the same project that was previously before you, which you did approve. The request is strictly for variance on the south side of the property, which is a buddy in the city of Westwood and also the residents or the property owners that are to the south, which has no bearing on really the height of the building itself. So the setback for the five-story and the setback for the seven-story, which is the garage, it does not have any effect on the residences to the north across West Forty-sixth Avenue. I understand their concern about the height. If they, if they reduce the building height and it was RP five, they may still need variances because there's a twenty-five-foot rear yard setback for RP five. But that's hypothetical because it's not before us tonight. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? I just have one. Legal counsel, is there any, any type of comment that you want to make with regard to public comment that whether or not we have the ability or the right to approve this project?
As I understand their, their position, it sounded as if they, they wanted me to render some type of opinion. And that's, that's not my, my place that this is, the, the commission renders those decisions. And so I know the five factors plays a part in that. So each one could be weighed as the commissioners choose. And if you, if you care to incorporate some of the rationale that was used in the last round as, as part of your decision tonight, you could, you can do that. You can refer to the rationale and incorporate or not as you choose fit, so.
But it's within the rights of this, this body to make the decision to approve or deny. Correct. Thank you. Any questions for legal counsel? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Anyone? Commissioner Jones.
Motion to both, it's not for two-zero-two-two-zero-four-six. Subject to questions and comments.
Okay, Commissioner Jones, you were cutting out, but it's my understanding your motion is for approval, subject to staff stipulations and comments. All right, thank you. Commissioner Ernst, is that a second? Thank you. So moved a seconded for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Nay.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Mr. Chairman, we have four in favor and two opposed, which is a majority. However, at the original hearing, it was a unanimous vote in recommenda, for approval. And I was advised by legal counsel today that if anyone that was present at that meeting changed their vote, that I needed to have a reason why. And so I will need to have a reason from Mr. Ward and Mr. Miller as to why they have changed their vote since the original hearing.
Commissioner Ward?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the people who are in opposition here about the law. If, if all these aren't, if these conditions haven't been met, can't approve it.
And are you aware that they have not?
Yes.
You, you believe they have not been met?
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Well, first, I think this is the third time this has been before Bozen. If I remember correctly, it failed the first time because we had to readdress it. So I voted no and made the motion the first time. Secondly, I, I don't agree with it and personally, they're back before us because they didn't follow procedure the first time, so that's my vote.
It wasn't the petitioner that didn't follow the rules, so. Commissioner Miller?
Well, I'm saying if we really looked at the record, this failed the first vote. So this is the third vote, not the second.
Okay, but what is your reason for changing your vote from the last month when you approved it? When you voted to approve? That's what they're asking about.
I just agree with the community and, on the, on the footprint after reconsidering.
All right, thank you. Janet, go ahead and give me the final count.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve BOZA twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-four-six, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes four in favor and two opposed.
Thank you.
And would you like to make an announcement about the planning commission meeting?
Planning commission meeting is, we will start as soon as we finish the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have two more cases, excuse me, three more cases to get through. So the planning commission will convene once we get through the Board of Zoning. So apologize for the delay and we appreciate your patience.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is BOZA twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-six-zero. Roger Barrett with SK Design Group for property at eight-ten North Sixty-seventh Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barrett is online.
Mr. Barrett, go ahead, please. Give us your name and address and tell us about your project. Go ahead and mute yourself.
My name is Roger Barrett with SK Design Group. We're civil engineers for Eagle Point Company Developers. We have been through the, the planning process and in the last planning commission meeting was approved for the, for the zoning change. And that was approved by this body. But this, the reason why we're back again tonight is that we, we have finally worked with the Unified Government on the off-site parking for the project. We would like to thank John Kelly, the Director of Building and Logistics, Gunnar Hand with Director of Planning and Urban Design Department, and of course Byron Troy, Principal Planner with Unified Government and Assisting Eagle Point and working with us on the new off-site joint parking agreement. Both UG and Eagle Point will be entering into an approved off-site twenty parking stall at Public Lot Six. I think Byron is here tonight and possibly has that exhibit to show where that's located with the approved parking distance from the main door of the proposed City Hall Place. Also included in are the available parking stalls at the private City Hall lots just to the east of this development that is also owned by Eagle Point. Yes, the cursor is showing where those, that parking garage is located as well. The reason why we're here tonight is per the required public notification requirements of this off-site parking agreement that we're, we were able to, to work together on tonight, that we request a continuance for this variance to be heard next month. Thank you.
You're requesting a thirty-day holdover?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please come to the microphone or raise your hand online. Saying, I'm sorry. Jerry Mulder?
Hi, my name is Jerry Mulder.
And I need your address once again, Ms. Mulder.
It's thirty-one South Hollick Street. I'd just like to speak to the oppo, opposition of this. Those designated parking areas that they're talking about are a, a great deal away from the property. And I can't imagine people choosing to park in those parking lots when they can take street parking away from other people who live in the community.
Okay, thank you very much. Rose, again, I'm going to need your last name, please, and your address.
Rose Isles, five-oh-six North Fourth Street. This looks like a fabulous project. I've been following it. I'm very excited to see this kind of development happen. I am concerned about the number of spaces they want to downgrade to. So if they could make those deals come true with making, getting actual contracts for parking, I would love to believe that people don't buy cars anymore, but I'm not buying it, so I'm against it until they can get something in writing guaranteeing that they meet the code and don't need a variance for parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to staff. Request for a holdover?
Request for a holdover. Just want a clarification as far as the need for the holdovers. For the distance requirement greater than two hundred feet from the front door to the property line, in this case, City Hall Lots Garage and then Lot E, or sorry, Lot Six, excuse me, which is directly west of the gas station, southwest of the Merc. You see here illustrated right in this area here will be where they're going to be parking. And that is access about four-hundred-and-ninety feet from the front door of City Hall Place. And so that's the need for the variance. That's why they're holding over so that we can combine this variance or seeking for parking attraction, reduce it to nine spaces instead of the forty-six they're needing. And then the distance to the front door from Lot Six and City Hall Lot.
And you're okay with the request for holdover?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
I actually had a question first, Commissioner Carlson.
Yes, go ahead, please.
On my, on my end, Byron was breaking up a little bit. So, because I thought we had discussed the distance of parking. And so that is a part of the variance and it, it would be increased by how much again?
About two-hundred and plus or minus ninety feet. So it's discussed at last, that's at last month's meeting, it was discussed. But we, it is not published for exceeding the distance requirement. So that's why it's been continued for one month.
Okay, and in your communication with the petitioner, petitioner who I know wants to lease these units is, is okay with that additional length?
Yes, yes. He's happy actually to have off-street parking kind of for himself.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? If not, I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request of both the number two zero two two dash zero six zero, subject to stipulations and comments.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones, you're, you cut out. Was, was your motion for a request for a whole grant, petition request for holdover?
Correct.
Thirty days. All right, thank you. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Motion is made for a thirty day holdover on this case. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over a BOZA twenty twenty-two dash zero six zero to the February thirteen, twenty twenty-three meeting, as requested by the applicant, passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next appeal was BOZA twenty twenty-two dash zero six one, Anthony Fakara for property at sixty-eight fourteen and sixty-eight twenty-two Berry Road. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Fakara, are you in the audience? Mr. Fakara, are you online? Janet, go ahead and move this to, after the last one and we'll go, we'll move on.
Okay. The next application is BOZA twenty twenty-two dash zero six seven, Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting for property at sixty-three forty River View Avenue. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Thompson, I got you queued up ready to speak. Just need your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson. I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, fourteen five hundred Parallel Road, Unit R, uh, Baser, Kansas, six six zero zero seven. And what we're looking to accomplish tonight is our client currently owns about fifteen acres there at sixty-three forty River View Avenue. And all they're looking to do is change the zone from R one to agriculture. And the reason for the variance um, is the, the lot does not meet the three to one width to depth ratio. Um, you can kind of see in the exhibit there, there's a kind of a panhandle. Um, that's how the property gets accessed. When the property, the surrounding properties were, uh, platted, um, that's kind of just how it was platted when they did it. I, I don't remember when, but I think it was like maybe the sixties or seventies. Um, but that's all they're looking to do, uh, for the variance is just get, uh, approval for a three to one, not meeting three to one width to depth ratio. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Staff recommends approval, certain stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Mr. Ernst?
I move the Board of Zoning Appeals, approve case BOZA two zero two two dash zero six seven, subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve BOZA twenty twenty-two dash zero six seven, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes six in favor and none opposed. Mr. Chairman, that will now take us back to BOZA twenty twenty-two dash zero six one, Anthony Fakara for property at sixty-eight fourteen and sixty-eight twenty-two Berry Road.
Mr. Fakara, are you in the audience or are you online? Okay, I do not see the applicant. Byron, do you want to present on this case or?
Yes, that's our problem.
All right, go ahead, please.
So the applicant originally required or requested a rezoning or, as far as the rezoning, he requested a variance for less than five acres. It's roughly four points eight seven, so point one three away from being five acres, which should meet the A G standard. Currently is on R one. Also, as well as the house itself is not fifty feet set back from the property line, which would be ag district required, it's currently um, thirty feet, so therefore deviation twenty. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please come to the microphone or raise your hand. Seeing none, unless there are any questions for staff, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve both the case number two zero two two dash zero six one, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Commissioner Straws?
I second it.
Thank you. Been moved a seconded for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve BOZA twenty twenty-two dash zero six one, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. That will conclude the agenda for the board.
Mr. Chairman, be, I'm sorry, before we conclude, um, we do need to hold the election of chairman and vice chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Oh, correct. Thank you, Janet. I appreciate that. Yes, we will now need to elect officers for, or excuse me, elected chairman and a vice chair for next year. And the floor is open for nominations. Commissioner Ernst? You're muted, Commissioner Ernst. Commissioner Ernst? There you go.
I nominate Jeff Carson as chair. Also have a nomination for vice chair.
Okay, do you want to make that nomination now?
Karen Jones.
All right. Uh, been nominated, Jeff Carson been nominated for chair, Karen Jones for vice chair. Karen Jones, do you have nominations as well?
No, I wanted to second, uh, what Commissioner Carson said in terms of nominating you for, uh, chair.
Well, thank you. Any further nominations?
I'll second Ernst's motion overall, so it includes Jones.
Okay, thank you. Janet, what do we need? We needed just a yay and a vote?
Let's just use a, uh, voice vote.
Okay, all those in favor of the nominations, submit it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you. The motion passes and thank you for the vote of confidence on behalf of myself and Commissioner Jones. This will conclude the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. We will take a five-minute recess and then we'll start the Planning Commission. I appreciate everyone's, uh, cooperation and their patience while we get through a lengthy meeting. Thank you.
Thing to put on the screen?
I wish I could, but no.
All right, Janet, I'm turning it over to you. We've already done the welcome.
Okay, thank you. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the commission chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in person in the commission chamber, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak, unmute your microphone, and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. And the chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The planning commission is a voluntary body of citizens which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the planning commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. For final plots and final plan reviews heard tonight, the planning commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the planning commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the planning commission may by two-thirds majority vote extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and those persons in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them. The planning commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@yco-kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the planning commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the planning commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at seven P M. The planning commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda, and items on the consent agenda are final plots, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received staff recommendation to approve. Unless there's a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the planning commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the planning commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. If you are in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the item you wish to remove from the consent agenda. The planning commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the planning commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision. In addition, those who received notices for this hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission Minutes. Special Use Permit, S P two thousand and twenty-two dash zero, I'm sorry, one oh seven. Natalie McNutt, renewal of a special use permit, S P two thousand and twenty-one dash zero seven seven, which expires March ten, two thousand and twenty-three, to operate a short-term rental at thirty-eight oh one Lloyd Street. Special Use Permit, S P two thousand and twenty-two dash one eleven. Jason Newman, renewal of a special use permit, S P two thousand and twenty dash eighty-four, which expired December tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, for a short-term rental at forty-one twelve Booth Street. S P two thousand and twenty-two dash one one five. Nathaniel. With Range Twenty-three Brewing, renewal of a special use permit, S P dash two thousand and twenty dash seventy-two expires February four, two thousand and twenty-three, to operate a micro brewery at one three four zero zero Donahue Road. Plan Review Application, P R two thousand and twenty-two dash zero four four. Oliver Hutchinson with Davidson and Architecture and Engineering. Final plan review for our lay-down yard and asphalt drive at three forty South Fifty-Ninth Lane. And Plan Review Application, P R two thousand and twenty-two dash zero four eight. Timothy Elliott with Atlas Land Consulting. Final plan review to construct a senior living facility at one one zero one three Haskell Avenue. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
No.
Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated January nine, two thousand and twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The publications in the echo for the special use permits, and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Janet. Is anyone on the commission want anything removed from the consent agenda for special consideration? No. He's saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have somewhat something removed from the consent agenda? I've got Jason Newman. Mr. Newman, go ahead.
Uh, Jason Newman, forty-one twelve Booth Street. I would like to request that S P two zero two two dash one 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 be removed to the non-consent agenda.
Okay, you want to have a discussion about your own case?
Um, yeah, I would like to request a five-year term for the renewal.
A final what?
A five-year term for the renewal.
Okay, we'll go ahead and remove it. Anyone else want anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, sing none. I will entertain a motion on the remaining items on the consent agenda. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the removal of case S P two zero two two one 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 at the request of the petitioner.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Straws, is that a second?
It is.
Thank you. Removed a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of S P two thousand and twenty-two dash one eleven. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Janet.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda with the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. These will be forwarded to the Unified Government for their meeting on January twenty-sixth at seven P M.
That will now take us back to the one item that was removed from the consent agenda, which is special use permit, S P two thousand and twenty-two dash one eleven. Jason Newman, renewal of a special use permit for a short-term rental at forty-one twelve Booth Street.
Hey, Mr. Newman, you're still queued up to speak, so go ahead and give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to do with this property.
Okay, Jason Newman, forty-one twelve Booth Street. Um, I would like to request, um, so this is my second time renewing the short-term rental permit, and I would just like to request a five-year term for this renewal.
Okay, anything else that you want us to know about your project? Have you had any issues, any code violations, any complaints or anything like that?
I have had absolutely nothing whatsoever, um, negative with this property, no complaints from the neighbors, no code violations, no citations. Um, it's been a great property, and, um, all the guests love it, and they've just been great with it.
And do you provide onsite management? Do you live next door to that property or within close proximity?
I live about fifteen minutes away, and yes, I do manage it myself.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand or come to the mic. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So typically with a renewal for short-term rental, doesn't live in the home, it's one, two, two, five. So this is the third time you're hearing this, would be hopeful third approval, second renewal, which would be a two-year term. Comes back again five years, so that's past precedent for those that do not live in the residence. So staff recommends still two years.
All right, thank you. Staff recommendations for two years. Any questions for staff? Saying none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Straws?
I have a question. If I make this motion to, uh, approve with staff stipulations and deny the petitioner, do I have to say that in the motion like that?
Your, your motion would be to just approve the request as, as, uh, submitted by the staff based on staff stipulations.
Yeah, I'm, I moved to approve based on staff stipulations, uh, the original staff stipulations.
For two years.
For two years, yes.
All right, thank you. The motion on the floor is for approval for two years based on staff recommendations and comments. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for approval made by Commissioner Straws, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I just had a point of this, uh, discussion because I was thinking the exact same thing that Byron was saying in terms of what the precedent that we've somewhat set with a few other examples. I was thinking just what he said the next time go around. Is there anywhere that we make that known, or are we just working to remember that as a precedent? Like a staff, when they communicate with the petitioner, the applicant, are they saying that so they're well aware at what point and under what conditions we can transition from two years, one year, because we do that for some two years, and then the five years, then they know in advance.
It's typically written in the draft staff report where we have our comments, typically in a general planning, it'll say, you know, subject to approval, X amount of time is given for this permit, so I know ahead of time that this what staff is thinking for the permit.
That answer your question, Commissioner Jones? It is addressed in the staff report. Thank you. Other questions, or excuse me, other discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call?
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P two thousand and twenty-two dash one eleven for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, January twenty-sixth, seven P M, before the Board of County Commissioners.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to note for the record that the two plan reviews, um, this is a final approval for them. They will not move on to the Board of Commissioners meeting.
That is correct. Thank you for that clarification.
We've now completed the consent agenda, and we are going to move on to the non-consent agenda. Our first item is change of zone, C O Z, two thousand and twenty-one dash zero four eight. Blair Tanner with Tanner and White Properties. Change of zone from C one limited business and R one single-family districts to R P six planned high-rise apartment district for a multi-family residential apartment complex and parking garage at forty-six oh one Rainbow Boulevard. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated January nine, two thousand and twenty-three. The application, other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in further In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo, the notices to property owners. And the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting earlier this evening. And Mr. Chairman, I would note for the record that after the um, packets went out last week. I did receive an additional email in opposition from Valerie Wells Fenton. Uh, and then she's a member of the Spring Valley neighborhood. There is no address on this. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Tanner? You're gonna be Mr. Jones. Okay.
Chair, members of the commission, thank you for having us here tonight. Again, Blair Tanner, Aaron Mesmer, Amy Grant from my office, Bob Johnson, Olsonelli Law Firm. Nine hundred West Forty Eighth Place, Kansas City, Missouri. Um, just as with the Board of Zoning Appeals decision earlier tonight. The only reason we're back before you again for this consideration. Is the failure of the notice that was sent by the city as well. Same issue was not sent to uh, the affiliate of the applicant to the south. Of the Woodside Village Development or to the city of Westwood, both properties in Johnson County, both aware of the, the application here tonight. No prejudice uh, in respect of that. Every interested party had an opportunity to be heard in front of you last time. You did recommend this application to, to the governing body on your October tenth meeting. We would ask for that same result again. Nothing has changed in our application. There's absolutely nothing new from what you heard last time. And in respect of that, in respect of your time, in respect of more items on the agenda. Uh, I will keep this presentation brief as well. There were other topics. Things that were tread very thoroughly in the October tenth. Uh, Planning Commission meeting. I will not retread all of that information again out of respect. Uh, for it already have been heard by you. However, if there's anything that I don't address that you would like to hear, questions that you have, please ask them of me. Uh, I would ask that if there's anything that's said in public commentary, please ask. If it, if it comes to uh, a question in your mind, please ask me. I will not do the full presentation I did at that time again because nothing has changed. That said, for the record, I will show you the project again. Um, and uh, exit stage left if you will, so that we can move forward here and cure this procedural error. Thank you. Uh, here's the site again, forty seventh and Rainbow in northeast corner. Byron, if you could keep moving, please. Thank you. Uh, the site plan in relation to uh, that intersection in the Woodside Village. Development to the south. Uh, as you know, we talked about the forty seventh street shared access in our last Board of Zoning Appeals session. Um, that is the only point of ingress and egress for this project. We removed an entrance off of forty six that was part of the original iteration of the plan. This is the third iteration of this plan that has been presented publicly. Um, and again, it is the same plan that you reviewed and approved for a recommendation to the governing body in Oc- in October. Uh, yes, thanks Byron. Um, just to blow up here of the site. Walking around the site forty six, you can see the enhanced pedestrian connectivity. That we implemented as part of the project was a key feature and design component of the project from the, the outset. Uh, again, we know that that is a main goal, a macro goal of the Rosedale Master Plan. We wanted to provide that uh. In, in respect of that, but also in respect to, to the interplay between the project and the community. Um, you can see the courtyard that is shown in green there as part of the project. That's not only a requirement of the city that we have that. Uh, but something that provides outdoor space uh, for our residents. You can see the dark gray area again. Sorry if you go back Byron. That's the, that's the footprint of the garage. We discussed that at the last. Meeting, but just to give you an orientation of the site. Um, you can see that this, in this two D rendering, and we'll, I'll show you better in the three D renderings. There's a little. Uh, black line, if you will, uh, running north, south, uh, to the west side of the, the courtyard. Thank you Byron. That indicates. The area of the project that uh, is the tallest densest portion. It's across only from the commercial property to the north. Uh, the project uh, drops down and um, is two stories less, yeah, going east exactly. Along forty six there, and I'll show you that clearly in the renderings. Um, if you could move to the next slide, please. Um, three D massing of the project, there's that uh, denser area of the project, as I said. Again, hitting another goal, the master plan, which is activation of rainbow, creating density along rainbow, creating activity along rainbow. Um, you can see the wide set sidewalks we have there. The multiple layers of landscaping that are another key component of the project and its integration into the neighborhood. And in keeping with uh, design guidelines. As you know, uh, that condition today is, is quite dangerous and there is no separation between the sidewalk and uh, rainbow. So creating quite a bit of safer condition and a condition that is going to um, certainly benefit all from folks walking across the new crosswalk that will paint from Francis to. Um, forty six across forty six, excuse me, to connect to our sidewalk that can now connect down to rainbow so that pedestrians are no longer walking in the street. Um, and having uh, you know, less interactions with cars. Uh, the cars that are parked currently on forty six will now be put onto our site. You can see that parallel parking right there. Uh, that'll all be pulled off the right of way where it currently is and moved entirely onto uh, the private site. Uh, if you can go to the next slide, please. This is that corner there, that activation of rainbow on rainbow and forty sixth. Uh, you can see the. Woodside Village project that is currently constructed there to the south. Uh, this is a view to the south down rainbow. Um, you can see the uh, landscaping, the sidewalks that I was just discussing. You can see the. Uh, high quality and variation of the materials. You can see the inset outset balconies. You can see the uh, glazing and extensive glass there in the lobby and the windows and that activated part. Again, keeping with design guidelines and uh, pushing all of the massing and activity, if you will, to rainbow. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of the forty seventh street ingress egress drive that we were discussing. It, if you, that cars is coming west. Um, that is depicted there. That's the Woodside Village project in Johnson County to uh, the right and to the south directionally. Um, and, and that's the primary and only drive aisle that will be used to access uh, ingress and egress to the project will enter into that garage as you move. Uh, to the east along that drive aisle. The next slide, thank you. Uh, I will, I will stop here, I guess, and say this applies to, to all of the renderings, uh, that these are rendered to scale by uh, professional architects. Uh, and, and in consultation with professional engineers. Um, I can speak to that with absolute certainty and truth. Uh, so everything you're seeing here, you're seeing is rendered to scale. And it is rendered to accuracy with regard to how the project will actually look from an architectural standpoint. Uh, once it's built. Next slide, please. This is the corner of forty six and rainbow will uh, implement a bike station. Um, for utilization of the community and the residents. Um, there's the lobby and the, the glazing that you'll see there uh, along, along rainbow. Next slide, thank you. Here you start to go east down forty six. This is where the project, as you can see, has dropped down in height. Uh, you can see the. Vertical and art and horizontal articulation of the building. You can see the inset uh, bottom. Uh, story there that is uh. It, it is. It flows within the, in the feel of a townhome, if you will, that you can see better and actually some, some next coming renderings. But they have uh, doorways, stair, stairs and uh, patios that integrate into the community where there's not a separation between. Forty sixth and the sidewalk and the surrounding community. There will be flow of people who live here uh, and, and. Uh, you know, not, not only going internal to the building, but becoming part of the community. That's the intent of the, the project. Next slide, please. Here you can see some of those townhome units. You can see the inset outset balconies. Uh, those are the things that address the. Uh, two hundred foot deviation from the design guidelines and why staff. Again, in their impartial capacity believes we have met the intent of those guidelines. Uh, by not creating an institutional looking facade. You can see all of the architectural treatments that have been implemented. So as to uh, make that facade architecturally interesting from. Any vantage point, it looks different uh, from the variation materials, the horizontal and vertical articulation. The uh, density along rainbow and then dropping down the pocket park that you can see here in this uh, depiction. Uh, in the townhome units, there are all sorts of features that have been implemented into the design in order to provide that. Uh, architectural interest so as to avoid. Uh, again, I'll use that terminology, the institutional looking facade that that two hundred foot guideline is intended to address. It's also intended to, to address, and these are. Words of, of Gunner at prior meetings, uh, multi uh, building projects and greenfields. That's not what this is here, obviously. Uh, you have to design the building to the site. You have to design the building around a hundred and forty foot long garage. You have to design the building around a courtyard, uh, which is also required by your code and something we want, of course, as well. Uh, and so with regard to the site and the. Already existing length of the parking that's needed to address the uh, the needs, the entire needs of the development. Uh, it simply is necessary to have a building that exceeds two hundred feet, but again, how you address that, you do it through. Uh, architectural features. I'll take staff's conclusion. I'll stand on that, that we've met that design guideline because of the way the building is designed. Please keep moving forward. Uh, again, a view on forty six. I'll keep going here and just wrap up. Uh, the townhome style units on the, on, on the bottom of the uh. Bottom floor and the forty six sidewalk and extensive landscaping, as you can see there. Keep moving, please. Thank you. Uh, again, just a different depiction of the same scene. Keep moving. And at this time, I'll invite Aaron and or Blair to come up and just briefly address you, but I thank you for your time. Again, if there's something. That is brought up in public comment or otherwise that you'd like me to. Rediscuss or readdress from our last hearing or otherwise, I'm happy to do it. Uh, and I'll stand for questions after Aaron makes a quick statement.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Aaron Mesmer, forty six twenty two Pennsylvania, Kansas City, Missouri. Um, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I, I did just also want to thank you for your time. I know we've been here. Several different times, um, and this has been a long process for us. We spent a year working with neighbors and constituents and your staff and stakeholders. After we spent four or five months prior to that, doing the initial design. Uh, we've got a lot of time into this and we think we've come up with a plan that not only addresses the need of the specific site. But addresses the needs that have been put forth by the community. And I can tell you, as a team of developers between our firm and Blair's. We've developed billions of projects in twelve states. And uh, I have never seen a map of support that looks like this. And I can also tell you, the, the ones that aren't colored aren't necessarily opposed. They just didn't sign a letter saying that they were in favor. We have sixty three letters of support. The most we've ever had on a project before is probably close to twenty. Of those forty five are neighbors that live in the U G. Six are neighbors that live in Westwood. Eight are businesses up and down rainbow. And four are industry leaders. So I can tell you without hesitation that this project has an immense amount of support. We appreciate your support. The last time we were here and advancing us to the full commission. Uh, we hope you do the same again tonight and certainly we're happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions if the commission has those at this time.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the commission? I'm gonna start. Can you address the height of the building? There's been much discussion about the height, about the shade factor, those kinds of things. Can you talk about? What led to the height of the building that it is? Talk about the shade study that was done. And where we're at with that because we're gonna hear a lot about that this evening. So I'd like to hear from you first.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, the building was originally, uh. We actually have some former renderings of the initial site. I'll speak to it. I can show you those. We had the seven stories extending down forty sixth initially and then dropping to six stories. We have since pulled that seventh story back only adjacent to the commercial property, as you've seen. We dropped an entire story off the building down to, to five and then set back the top story. Uh, a number of feet so that it's uh, essentially not visible from ground level.
By dropping that, by dropping that height, how many units did you lose from the original project?
Thank you for the question. One seventy one to one forty nine. So I believe that's twenty two.
Twenty two.
Twenty two units. And so to anticipate the next question, there was extensive review. Uh. A- as to the viability of the project, how many units could be lost? How, how could we address this height consideration in working with the community through three neighborhood meetings and then many. Additional conversations uh, outside of those neighborhood meetings. Uh, in hearing that. You know, that there one, there was a desire to have a developer do something substantial to address, address the height. Losing that floor, dropping twenty two units was, we felt both substantial and significant, which I think we discussed uh, in the October meeting. Very extensively as well, and also produced a project that could be viable. At a hundred forty nine units, that's as tight as we can clamp it down. So we do feel like we have come a very long way. We've taken a bill, a story off the building and pushed that density. Completely to adjacency to commercial, uh, and also. Able to produce a project that can thrive in your community. Nobody wants to produce a project that is set up to fail to, from the beginning. That is the project you see before us and also a project that can maintain the level of quality that we want to produce here, which I think comes through in those renderings. As far as the shadows, we produced the shadow study showed you last time, uh. That information can bring up those slides again. What I think the key metric here is to uh, recall in, and recount from our last meeting. Is that in reducing that story from six to five, again, the seventh story does not impact whatsoever any shadows upon. Single family properties and reducing that story from six to five, we've reduced. The shadows upon the two homes that are affected fifteen to nineteen percent prospectively. And so I will stand on Gunner's words that that was a significant uh, move by the developer with a significant impact. On production of the shadow effect on the two homes that are affected. Uh, we'll also note, as we discussed last time, that shadows, we, this project is going to produce some shadows. But the shadows in the winter are also produced as you go to south down Francis from homes onto other homes. It's a natural condition of the winter. We're not denying that there is some impact of the project, but it is an impact because of the topography. It is not dissimilar to the impact that houses are going to have upon each other going south. If you, because we are cutting into the earth and reducing the um. Reducing the. Make sure this gentleman's okay before I move on.
We're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Reducing the five feet on the elevation of the site, we're going to cut. Cut the earth and reduce the site by five feet before we build on it. So. The height of the building and adjacent to the single family homes, uh, I believe is fifty six feet. Is that correct? I will give you the exact eight foot cut. So I'm gonna give you the exact number because I think that this is an important. Uh. Component of the height question as well. It's fifty nine feet with a three foot elevation and then a fifty six foot building. That's fifty nine feet. You would be allowed to build a thirty five foot home on the eight foot elevation there today, which would be forty three feet. So the distinction between single family home and our building adjacent to the single family homes is sixteen feet. It is not substantial in the creation of shadows. Given the distinction between what we could produce as a, the least dense residential use there compared to this. And not only that, but we're actually moving the building back substantially from where that property line is today. The property line today is that i- if you can uh. Think of, yeah, let's go to some slides here, I think, to show that better. Because we're asked the question. I, I think you'd have to go past the thank you actually Byron, so. I apologize if this is a bit clunky, but I want to make sure. You're gonna have to keep going. I think it's like slide thirty six, so it's, it's quite a bit. Down the line here. Yeah. So you can see the property line today. Um, and. You could build the single family home quite a bit closer to that property line than you, we are going to build our building and you can see the. Distance between our, the face of our building and the faces of those two homes. If you go to the next slide, please. Um, this is the current site condition today and that eight foot elevation I was discussing, if you go to the next slide. This is the current condition today, eight foot elevation, parking that extends approximately six feet into a twenty two foot, three inch. Wide right of way constricting that right of way. Um, and if you go to the next slide, it'll show you the comparison of what it'll be. So the right of way will be slightly widened. It will add the parking entirely on our property and then it'll push an additional. Uh, number of feet to the front of our building so that our building is actually set back. Uh, quite a bit farther than the current property line at a lower elevation. Again, at a. Farther setback than a single family home could be built if you had uh, the same pad that's there today at eight feet versus. the same pad that's there today at eight feet versus the three feet. Again, this all does speak to the shadow condition that if you built the least dense residential use there today, you would be creating shadows on those properties in a substantially similar way to what we will be creating here. And again, we've reduced those shadows, and they're only in the three winter months of the year. The rest of the year, there's no shadow produced in those homes by 15% to 19% through the reduction of that flight or that, that floor of the building.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone that wants to speak in favor of this project, please come to the microphone or raise your hand online. This is in favor. Yes, sir. I know we've heard it before, but may name and address, please.
Okay, I'll be really brief. Dan Thompson, 4514 Francis Street. Definitely for the project. I would say Francis Street is a majority green. You can look on the map. Fact, there's two or three more houses that have said yes in our neighborhood that they didn't have on their map. I personally visit, visited 40 to 50 houses. The majority of people are for this project. Some don't want to speak out because of the opposition has been extremely they were, they don't want to, they don't want to be identified as somebody that's for the project, but they're, so they're remaining neutral. But I personally know that most neighborhoods for this. We need our neighborhood to grow in the right way. There's 140 new taxpayers that you'll be adding to the city that probably wouldn't be living in the city if they didn't have this type of housing. So please, please vote yes. Let's get this to the commissioners and I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead and pull that microphone down so we can hear you better this time. There you go.
I got it.
Name and address.
Yes, so McKenzie Gabriel, M C K E N C I E. I live at 4448 Cambridge Street. And, and kind of just tacking on to what I spoke about earlier, and I think this project would bring great value to our neighborhood. And I come from a background in a real estate family, so I do know that something is going to develop there and who knows what it might be. It could be a project way less beautiful than what we see here today, but the bottom line is that space is going to be developed no matter what. And so we could take a chance and gamble on a corporate or a bigger situation, or we could take a really beautiful property that's really been thought about and thought about by us, and we've also thought about the community as well. So I vote yes. I hope you do as well.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, again, my name is Jerry Greer. I live at 4503 Francis Street, KCK 66103. I'm here today in support of the Woodside Village Rosedale project. It's my opinion that Blair and his team have worked very hard to accommodate our community's concerns, and I firmly believe that their development plan will make marked improvements to the Spring Valley neighborhood as well as the surrounding Rosedale area. I would encourage you guys to improve the Woodside project, and I look forward to having new neighbors who would also appreciate the aesthetics and, and the improvements that Blair's team is proposing there.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this project? Please raise your hand or come to the mic. Okay, now we'll go to the opposition. Anyone who wants to speak against, please come forward. Thank you. Your name and address, please.
Kelly White, 4410 Francis Street. I'm in opposition, obviously, and I want to reference number seven and the factors to be considered of the staff report that that this project needs a 200-foot deviation in the length. If they were to build a smaller project, they wouldn't need to have that deviation. And I know he likes to talk about how you need to do that so it doesn't look like an institution. But again, if it's a smaller project, you don't have to worry about that. The R6 zoning, obviously, we're very much against that. The slides they show you don't show it to scale to the neighborhood. They show like parts of it over to the side of the neighborhood. It doesn't show the seven stories and then the five stories to scale as our presentation did. Obviously, that's not the project itself, but that's why they don't show it to you because it would not be in line with the neighborhood. And I just want to talk about the shadow study for a minute because I believe the shadow study was done with an app, and I don't know, maybe that's normal. I don't know if professionals usually do that, but from what I saw of the shadow study, there was no name attached to it as far as, I don't know if that would be an engineering firm. I guess staff could talk to that, but
We'll find out.
Yeah, obviously, I and my group are vehemently opposed to R6 and to the deviation in the length. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Gil Pentar, 4178 Cambridge. Vehemently opposed to R6 zoning. If the planning commission is charged with eight to 12 criteria to find, the eight are golden factors. And if you go through the golden factors, as staff has, of course, and the applicant, they discuss those factors, and I would submit to you the items one, which is character of the neighborhood, item seven, in terms of compliance with the master plan. This plan needs deviations. It doesn't comply with the master plan. So if you approve this plan, as is, you're approving deviations which goes against the master plan. All I can say is, you know, pictures are real pretty about, look at the relief and this and that. You know, that's just kind of a whitewash, in my view. You have to look at the golden criteria, and I challenge all the planning commission members to specifically state where the golden criteria has been met. And if the, if this goes to the commissioners, we'll need findings of fact and conclusions of law, Mr. Attorney, to approve R6 zoning, which is totally improper in a single-family residential neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Chris Strider, 4529 Francis. I would just again, I oppose this based on the overall size of the building. This slide presents it quite well. It's, you know, 2D, but from the beginning, they've talked about all the iterations of time they put in. Well, I feel for you, but from the beginning, they've chosen this vertical-style, multi-story parking garage and the green space courtyard. Those two considerations were not done by mother nature. They were not forced by the site. They were chosen by the humans, the developers. They chose to have an awkward parking garage arrangement and this green courtyard. That is what has forced the size of this building to be too big. Their choices, not the land, not the site, their choices of design style forced the building to be very, very tall. The second component you should consider, phase one, the existing apartments that are in operation are 91 apartments, not 149. 91 apartments have been cash flowing quite well. They're fully quite well-occupied, maybe 100%. I'm not sure. But they built a 91-unit building right next door, and it seems to cash flow. Therefore, it's economically viable. This design, yes, these guys did make some design appeasements for the neighborhood, but the key thing is, is the multi-level parking garage and the courtyard took away property from their building site that they could have used for apartments, and it forced their hand to make a larger building than they need to. So that's why this violates KSA 1279 A and C. The site doesn't force this, the developers, the designers did. So that's why it's in if you pass this, it will be likely in violation of state statute. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else online? Yes, we'll go to Rose. Rose, I know we've heard from you before, but I need your last name again, please, and your address.
Yep, Rose Isles, 506 North Fourth Street. And I just want to say, I think RP6 is an inappropriate code for this spot. And the building and the variations, deviations that they want are just going to make this thing too big. I am with the opposition on this. And hopefully y'all can, can see that.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie Wells Fenton.
Oh, here we are. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead and give us your name, please, and address.
Yes, Valerie Wells Fenton, 4430 State Line Road, KCK. I am in opposition to this position, and thank you, Jenna Parker, for mentioning my email. My two biggest concerns are the Rosedale Master Plan and the considerations in particular that were taken by other buildings, other developers since the Rosedale Master Plan was adopted. And two excellent examples of even commercial developers such as Tanner and White, and that would be CVS and McDonald's, even the Lane 4 building across from KU. All of these developers worked with the Rosedale Master Plan, not against it. They did not require any special considerations. The townhomes on the corner of 45th and Rainbow, those are proportionate. They are in keeping with the nature of the neighborhood, which is the intent of Rosedale Master Plan. So I would ask that, again, we look at the Rosedale Master Plan, which commission states is part of our consideration. Your constituents, your residents worked hard to create that plan, and we are the people who will be watching how you vote. We will be watching if there are incentives that are put into these luxury apartments at an average of $2,400 a month. That is not affordable housing for the average Rosedalian. Those are my oppositions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jill Folsom. Jill Folsom.
I'm Jill Folsom. My address is 4446 Francis, KCK, just down from this. I really admire what Valerie just said. It is about the master plan. This is one development in our neighborhood. There's other developments all around us. If we don't protect the master plan and you don't vote to uphold that master plan, then our neighborhood will crumble at the edges. This is too big. And as again, I have to say Valerie said, all the other developments around us have held to that master plan and kept our neighborhood intact.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Aaron Striker.
Hi, this is Aaron Striker with Roseville Development Association at 1403 Sappless Boulevard. Just here once again to state our opposition to the plan as proposed. The I'm sorry. Oh, all right, there's some
I'm not sure. Go ahead. Keep going.
Okay, I apologize. So I continue to disagree, which is rare for me, with the planning staff's interpretation of the Roseville Master Plan height guidelines. The plan talks a great deal about gradual transitions between lower density, air density uses with the goal of increasing density at certain locations. And one of the things that's really important is how you treat those kind of in-between areas, which is what this lot is. I continue to think that R6 zoning is not appropriate adjacent to, both next to and across the street from R1 single-family homes. And I continue to think that five stories is too tall next to one and two-story, single-family homes and across the street from those. And since the people who are going to be most affected by this development, the ones living directly next to it are not in support, RDA continues to oppose this project. I want to say another big thank you to the many, many neighbors who have put their time and rain power into doing work on this, both in support and on opposition, and for the great thoughtfulness that the planning commission has approached this with, as well as the neighborhood and the developer. And I want to agree with, oh, gosh. The speaker who lived at 4448 Cambridge, and I'm so sorry I didn't write your name down, that something probably will be developed on this lot. I agree with that, and I want to see that happen. And I want to see it be just a little bit shorter to better transition from low density to high density at this really important location. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. And lastly, we have Jerry Mulder. Jerry Mulder.
Hi, my name is Jerry Mulder. I live at 31 South Pollock Street. I would just like to say that in the past, we have spent many hours putting together master plans. And now they're, they're even asking us to start putting together a Wyandotte County master plan. And you put your hours in to create these master plans, and then the first signs of any development come in and the money talks. The developers' money talks. And all of a sudden, all of the hard work and effort that people put into master plans are thrown out the window. And it is discouraging, and it just infuriates me that we are, we fought this same battle at 505 Central, and we lost. And we keep fighting these battles and we keep losing. We're going to lose our city and its character and its charm because we can't get people to stand up for our value and our master plan.
Thank you, Ms. Mulder. Okay, with that, I'm going to call the applicant back to the microphone and see if there's a couple of issues that you can address. Talked about the shower, the shadow study. Character of the neighborhood, golden factors. I think at the end of the day, it's, we're going back to size. Is there anything else that you saw that you wanted to address in the public comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of the commission. Just, just very briefly here. We spoke to size and transition. I think your question was salient to the point on that, and I, I spoke to most of my points there. Again, you know, the comparison to what could be built there as the lowest density as an R1 site and a commercial site on the west side and an R1 site today and what we propose to build, given that we are cutting into the earth and moving that building back, is not a great variance in condition. And so I think it's over, it's an oversimplification to say too big, too tall. The building has been designed for very extensive, you've seen three iterations or have been 100 to create the best project that is most adaptive to the neighborhood, creates the best transition to the neighborhood, and frankly, will create community members that will interact with those in the neighborhood. So that's speaking about building height and transition. There were several comments about the master plan. I did speak to the design guideline deviation that staff does support. Earlier, a couple of points that were made, though, that I do want to hit as well. Talking about compliance with the master plan, and we come in and we throw it out the window. That's the exact opposite of where we started this project and where we still are today. Day one, the developer came in and said, and spoke with staff, familiarized themselves with the master plan, the architect on this project familiarizes themselves with the entirety of the Rosedale Master Plan and realized that it met the master plan through its three main categories. One, the site is designated for urban mixed use. Something that seems to kind of get jumped over here. Three-plus-story apartments is allowable and designated within urban mixed use. That's what we're producing here, three-plus-story apartments. Activation of rainbow and density along Rainbow. That's what we're given. That's what we are bringing here. This is on Rainbow. This is in one of your major thoroughfares and corridors in the city. Talking about the highlights and hitting those three different zones in the master plan. Gunner has spoken to this very eloquently in prior meetings as well. We are meeting the the requirements of the master plan and the intent of the master plan. You can take a number of community members that agree with us, some that you heard from that don't agree with us. You can take a developer who obviously is asking for your approval. I would submit that staff is the, is the party here that's impartial. Staff is the party who is tasked with being impartial to make a decision to analyze this application on its merits and analyze whether it is in compliance with the master plan. Their determination, I stand on, and we stand on that it is in compliance with the master plan. We all have an opinion about it, but let's look to staff's professional recommendation on this in that we've created activation of rainbow, pedestrian connectivity, all those things that we want. And then I've also addressed the design guideline through the articulation of the building and the architectural treatment of the building, which is how universally, any, any Class A multifamily building with a wrapped garage, which is necessary at the site, as we've discussed extensively, for any height of any building because of the layout of the site, anywhere within the Kansas City metro has been longer than 200 feet. It is a necessity to have a building It is a necessity to have a building of that length, but the way you deal with it again is through architectural treatment. You've seen all of the renderings. You've seen exactly what's been done very mindfully to make the building not look like one monolithic wall, which is not what it is clearly. So that it is not something that is architecturally uninteresting or creates that institutional looking facade. As a result, staff is concluding, we concluded we meet the master plan and we stand on that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm now going to go to staff and get their comments and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of things I wanted to note. There's reference to CVS, McDonald's, Boulevard Townhomes. Those were all constructed prior to this iteration. Roselast Master Plan that was approved, I believe in twenty sixteen. Also Hudson Apartments, which is at thirty-sixth and Rainbow, they received the same DBH request that. This development is seeking related to the massing two hundred feet. So they did receive a request. They got the request from you. This, now this project has been remanded back by the Board of Commissioners to the Planning Commission regarding a notice issue similar to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So you've seen this previously, nothing has changed. It's the exact same project that was previously before you back in October. But on December first, due to the notice issue, the Board of Commissioners remanded it back to Planning Commission and now we have it before us again tonight. Staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Straws.
Just one as a clarification, not to prolong this application, but one of the community members mentioned. That they, this was their choice, but I heard somebody also say that the green space was something that. Was required for this property. So I was confused a little bit on that, whether this was a design choice or was this something that we made them have is just little green spaces here in the middle.
Not that. Thank you for the question. Yes, I, Byron, can you?
Yeah, I can answer that. So Byron's why planning department. So it relates to vehicular, not, non-vehicular open space requirement for R six as with RP five. You have to have forty percent. And so we counted this space as that along with the green space around it. That's non-vehicular open space and that's a good requirement.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Straws?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any further questions of staff and their recommendation? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion when appropriate. Commissioner Straws.
If I get this right, I moved approve CLZ two zero, two one dash zero four eight, according to staff stipulations.
Motion made by Commissioner Straws for approval of this application. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion made for approval? Seeing none, roll call please.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
No.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of COZ twenty twenty-one dash zero four eight. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes four in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January twenty-sixth at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here and for your testimony this evening.
Chairman, that takes us to change of zone application, COZ twenty twenty-two dash zero four four. Anthony Ficara. Change of zone from R one, single-family district to AG agriculture district. For B Farm and Garden at sixty-eight twenty-two Berry Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo, the notices to property owners. And the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ficara, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. We did miss you at the Board of Zoning Appeals. However, your case did move forward, hence we're discussing this case now. So if you would, please give us your name and address. Tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes, my name is Anthony Ficara. I'm at six eight two two Berry Road. Basically, I've got just under five acres. Most of it's wooded. A lot of it you can't even see from the road or any neighbors. So I would like to in the back raise bees, then also have a garden as far as. Flowers and stuff like that, the bees would pollinate. And then also on the property, I'd like to add an additional building. I've got my house and then I've got a twelve by twenty-four outbuilding. And so I'd like to add another building, which would be, I used to have another house where sixty-eight fourteen. Before the properties were, were joined, that house has been knocked down. So back behind that house, I think I, I entered a, a plan kind of showing where it'd be at. But I'd like to put the building there just for, I do some woodworking, so you know, as a hobby. So I'd like a place to do that, to keep equipment as far as for the bees gardening. And then just some storage space also in that building, just so it's, right now, I, like I said, I've got twelve by twenty-four shed and. Not really a whole lot of space in there for storage, so it's a little tight. And that's about it.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? I just have one for you, Mr. Ficara. Are you planning on leaving the existing structure that's already on the property in addition to the house and the new building?
Yes, he's talking about the shed, the twelve by twenty-four shed.
Yeah.
Yes, that was fair.
That's going to remain in addition to the one you want to build?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of this application or in opposition to, please come to the microphone or raise your hand. Seeing no one, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Questions for staff on their recommendation? Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Ernst.
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval. A petition COZ two oh two two dash zero four four, subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of COZ twenty twenty-two dash zero four four. Subject to the conditions and the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, January twenty-sixth at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Our next application is change of zone COZ twenty twenty-two dash zero four eight. Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting. Change of zone from R one, single-family district to AG agriculture district. For agricultural purposes at sixty-three forty River View Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three. The application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo, the notices to property owners. And the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, ready to go? Just name and address, please. Tell us what you'd like to do here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson. I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, fourteen five hundred Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas, six six zero zero seven. And what our client is looking to do is at sixty-three forty River View Avenue. He's just looking to change. It's currently zoned R one and he's looking to change his own to agriculture. He plans on building a shed eventually to store some lawnmower equipment. But that is, he owns about fifteen acres and he just wants to change his own from R one to Ag. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come to the microphone or raise your hand online. Seeing now, we'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Toy? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve COZ two zero two two dash zero four eight, subject to staff stipulations and requirements.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Straws?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of COZ twenty twenty-two dash zero four eight. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, January twenty-sixth before the Board of Commissioners at seven PM.
Thank you.
Our next, sorry, our next application is change of zone COZ twenty twenty-two dash zero four nine. Corb Maxwell with Paul Sinelli. Change of zone from CP two, planned general business district to AG agriculture district. For the American Royal Development at one one seven eight seven American Royal Way. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three. The application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Janet, will you make notation that Mr. Waters has stepped in for Mr. Conway for legal counsel?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, Mr. Lee, I'm assuming that you're representing the applicant, applicant this evening?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Lee with the Paul Sinelli Law Firm, nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Kansas City, Missouri. Appearing tonight on behalf of my partner, Corb Maxwell, but much more importantly, the American Royal Association. As the developer of, of the project that's before you this evening. I did have, I also have Jackie McClaskey, the interim president and CEO of, of the American Royal Association. Along with various members of the design team on Zoom tonight, if, if there are questions for those folks. And Mr. Chairman, we did prepare a short PowerPoint, if I might have the ability to share my screen.
Yes, Janet, will you make sure he has that authority?
Yeah, I'm going to move him over to panelists. It'll take just a second here and then. Hey. Okay, Mr. Lee, you should be good now.
All right, let's see if I can figure this out.
If you can't, we've got a room full of people that are going to be mighty upset with you, sir.
Yeah, fair enough. I'm not, oh, here we go.
Yes, we can.
Right, perfect. Thank you for, for bearing with me. Okay, so I, I believe that all or most on this commission are, are familiar with, with the overall project and site. The request before you this evening relates specifically to a twelve-acre portion of that site. And, and really dates back to April of, of twenty twenty, when we were before this commission for our final development plan approval. And a few months prior to that, for a rezoning request. On this twelve-acre portion of the site. And that was done, which is highlighted here in blue. That rezoning was, was done solely for the purpose of accommodating. A hotel that was shown on the plan at the time and, and we went through, got that rezoning. As you may recall, there was also a special use permit and a couple other approvals along with that. And then ultimately got hit by COVID and had to hit pause temporarily, so. We have continued to review and, and further refine that plan in the meantime. And are anxious, as, as I'm sure, some of you and, and others at the UGR as well to get this going again. So we anticipate being back before you in the very near future here with plans to submit. Slight revisions to that final development plan at the end of the month here, and I believe that those will be before you at the March Planning Commission Meeting. So I think that at that time, what you will see is, is a substantially similar plan. What we think is, is ultimately a better plan, but one that no longer includes that hotel there. So. In talking with staff, I, I think that everybody agreed that without the hotel, which again was the only reason that we rezoned that originally to begin with. That this zoning for this property should revert back to the original AG agriculture district, keep that one single designation. Consistent across the entire site. So that is really the reason before the request that we have for you tonight. Hope to, to be back before you very soon with, with that updated plan. One item worth noting, and I should have switched to this, but here you see the original hotel. This is the portion of the site that we are talking about now. We, I should note that in, in leading up to this rezoning submittal, we worked with staff and continue to do so after we received their comments. And I believe that we are generally in agreement with, with all of those now, as they pertained a lot to. The one item where we had some back and forth on, fortunately, we spoke with, with Byron and Gunner today and I believe that we were able to find a solution that works for, for both parties. And so we would, would ask for your approval this evening with one modification to the stipulations that. I believe you will hear from, from staff that they're supportive of. And that relates to these two lots here at the northwest and southeast portions of the overall site. And it's the issue of whether or not gravel will be permitted at all east of one hundred and eighteenth. So. And you may again recall from the original approvals, we have grass parking, gravel drives west of one hundred and eighteenth. We did not previously have those over to the east. And, and staff's original comment was no gravel east of one hundred and eighteenth. The American Royal would like to have gravel in just those two specific areas and I think it's important to note. It's not your, your standard typical gravel that you think of and it's, it's what we call clean gravel that includes either. Larger aggregate, washed aggregate to ultimately create a dust-free surface. And, and that's what we would propose here. Staff initially was, was resistant to that and what we agreed upon was. Let's do that now for a period of five years, at which point we would have to ultimately pave these over. And, and that was a minimal to staff. And so that's the direction that, that we've worked out with them and would ask for your approval of this evening. And here is some proposed language that we believe accomplishes that. So would ask again for your approval or recommendation to the full commission and happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? So, Mr. Lee, can you tell me what's so special about five years?
So it's, it's really accommodating the build time that we anticipate. Once we get in, build out. It provides some flexibility for the project to get up and running and figure out. It, it gives the flexibility. So we bring in livestock trailers, for example, and can park those in these gravel areas and then. Also have them serve a dual purpose as passenger vehicle parking, feeling all of that out. There's no magic to it. It, it's a timeline that we agreed to, staff was comfortable with, that we think gives us ample time to, to get that piece figured out as well on our end.
But in five years, you're not going to come back and ask for that to be a permanent.
That is not the intention at this point, absolutely not. I think that, you know, there's, there's obviously a cost component to that, to not. To be able to have that cost savings on the front end and, and have that money better spent elsewhere on the project initially. And, and so no, we do not plan to come back and ask for that.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions for staff or for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to, please raise your hand or come to the mic. Seeing no one, we'll go to staff and get their comments and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is amenable to amend. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Staff is amenable to amending the stipulation number one in lieu of this seen on the screen with that staff recommended approval, subject to conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Toy? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Strauss?
I move to approve change of zone twenty twenty-two dash zero four nine with the stipulation change in stipulation one, according to staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion is made for approval, subject to the additional stipulations added by staff and requested by the applicant. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone COZ twenty twenty-two dash zero four nine, subject to the conditions in the staff report, including the modification to condition number one. Passes five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January twenty-sixth at seven PM. And, Mr. Lee, if you could please let Mr. Maxwell know that this is the first time we've ever completed one of his cases with his name attached to it in record time. So I've made note of that for when he comes back before this commission in the future.
I absolutely will do that. Thank you all.
I will be requesting you if it goes any longer than this next time around. Thank you.
Thanks all.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications that we're gonna hear together. Change of zone application COZ twenty twenty-two dash zero five zero, David Lottz with Continental Consulting Engineers. Change of zone from RP three planned townhouse and RP four planned garden apartment districts to RP five planned apartment district to construct a senior living facility at twenty-three hundred and twenty-three oh two North one hundred and thirteenth place and plant twenty twenty-two dash zero four two preliminary plant to combine two residential lots into one lot to construct a senior living facility at the same address. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three, the application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind on echo for the change of zone application and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Lottz, are you available? There we go. Thank you.
Yes, Dave Lottz with Continental Consulting Engineers, one one zero zero six Parallel Parkway. Byron, would it be possible to get a site plan up here by chance? Okay, we've got a site plan up here at this point. This project was originally known as Hazelwood, the south portion of it, if I could get maybe the whole screen there, Byron. The south portion of it, it looks like an L was known as Hazelwood. It was built in approximately twenty fifteen. The existing building contains approximately one hundred and twenty units that is used for both assisted living and also memory care. There's approximately eighty assisted living units within the building and approximately forty memory care units within the building. Again, the building was originally built in about twenty fifteen, known as Hazelwood, is now known as the Piper. At some point, the developer that I'm working with, Founder Commercial, came forward and bought that particular building. There was approximately two point six acres of vacant ground to the north of the existing building. Founder Commercial thought it might make sense to add an element to the the senior living that didn't currently exist, then that element is is independent living. So what we're coming before you tonight with is a building for forty units. It's a three-story building with a function of serving as an independent living so that we have kind of a cohesive community that has now would have now memory care, assisted living, and then independent living. This is a fifty-five-plus age community, as is all the property adjacent to it. One of the things that we're looking to do with the new building is connect it to the existing building with a covered walkway on located between the north side of the existing building and the south side of the posed building. That covered walkway is open and it's there to provide access for the people that are living in the independent or in the independent living to to maybe potentially go and visit relatives or folks they know in the assisted living. As people age, they don't all age together at the same time. So a man and wife, one might need assisted living or they might need memory care while the other needs no care whatsoever. So we're trying to build a cohesive community and that's the purpose for the additional building. The new building will look identical in appearance to the existing building. The new building will utilize the existing kitchen within the existing building. It'll utilize the existing service area. The service area currently exists on the north side of the existing building in that aisle way that goes east-west. We will not be building additional service area, but we'll be trying to block where that service area is by locating it between the two buildings. As part of this plan and following with code requirements on the new building that we're we're gonna construct, we're looking at putting a screen wall on the west side of it. That screen wall will shield any light source from cars within the parking lot. We're doing extensive landscaping. We're gonna share amenities between the two buildings, whether it be picnic areas, potentially bocce ball, just various types of outdoor amenities. There was an existing, the new building will have its own dining area. The only thing I really share with the old building is is the kitchen facility. With that being said, I think I'm more or less done with my presentation and would open up the floor to any questions that somebody might have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I'm not seeing any. We'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case for or against? Please come forward or raise your hand online. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and go to staff, go to Mr. Toy and get his recommendations and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff has one topographical error that we want to change. It's stipulation number nine, where it, as David Lottz originally talked about, having Masonry War privacy fence along the west property line where it says memory care building, and it should actually say independent living building instead. With that, staff recommends approval, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward, go ahead.
We're doing two separate ones, one for the plat and one for the change of zones. Is that correct?
That is.
Yes, we'll take.
That is correct. We'll take this changes on first. Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Changes on first.
I move to approve COZ two zero two two dash zero five zero, subject to staff stipulations and the correction that was noted.
Thank you. Motion made for approval for change of zone by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the change or approval for change of zone? Saying none, roll call, please.
Strauss.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of COZ twenty twenty-two dash zero five zero, subject to the conditions in the staff report and the one change but made by planner Toy. Passes five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. And now entertain one for the plat.
Move to approve plat two zero two two dash zero four two, subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to approve. The plat was made by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second? A second. Second by Commissioner Beth. Any discussion? Commissioner Jones, is your hand up for discussion or was that gonna be a second?
I was having a technology issue. I was taking it down. It was gonna be a second.
All right, thank you. We'll go to roll call then, please.
Uh, Strauss.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve plat twenty twenty-two dash zero four two, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard on January twenty-sixth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-two dash zero eight nine. Mr. Falcon, for special use permit for the temporary use of land to keep two storage containers on a residential lot at four 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 North Tenth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three, the application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Falcon, are you available online or in the audience? Mr. Falcon. Janet, I don't see the applicant online or in the chambers. Can we go ahead and set this for the end of the agenda?
Sorry, I forgot I was muted. Yes, we can. Um, the next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero eight and Marshall with Business Law Advisors. Special use permit for the temporary use of land to keep equipment and materials related to a roofing business at sixty-five forty-one Donahue Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three, the application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do here.
My name is Ann Marshall and I represent my clients, the Armstrongs, at sixty-five forty-one Donahue Road. I work at Business Law Advisors. My address is five one zero six Brookside Boulevard, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one zero six. My clients during COVID had some excess equipment and they're also in the audience as well, if they'd like to speak to some of these things as well. And we just like a special use permit for two years for temporary storage of their equipment. It is less than five acres and we have also had three people that all have said that they are fine with what they're wanting to do.
Okay, any questions for the applicants? Can you talk about some of the material that's stored outside of the fenced areas? There's a couple of disabled vehicles, things like that. Are those gonna be addressed?
Yeah, I will ask my clients to do that who are in the audience right now.
I'm sorry?
My clients are in the audience right now, so I will ask them to further elaborate.
Okay, go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Garen Armstrong, six five four one Donahue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh four. Roxy Armstrong, my mother. And currently we have material shingles there that are behind the fence. Outside of the fence, we do have some old auto parts that we're getting rid of.
So those items will.
Are there other pictures out there? I think they were showing that somewhere. Of what we got, yes.
The stuff in front.
Um, to the right, on the bottom right, those are items that we're going to get rid of. We pulled those back from the back fence when we started building, putting this together. And so hopes that some people would get what they needed and help people out, because I just don't, we don't need them anymore since my husband has passed. And so we will be getting rid of those.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Jones.
Yes, I just had a quick question. What's your plan for after the two years is up after the temporary storage?
After that's up, then we're going to get rid of some of that gravel, get it back to the original driveway space and just have it have that gone, plant, re-sawed.
So is your anticipation that two years will be enough time to eliminate the amount of storage that you're gonna need for the materials that you currently have there?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones, did that address your question as well?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Not seeing anyone, we'll go to Mr. Toy and get his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the applicant said, this is for two years, two years maximum for temporary slant for commercial purposes, cannot be extended beyond that. Also, they, as it says in the staff report, as they alluded to earlier, they'll clean up the site, remove the gravel, restore it back to grass as a condition of approval. With that, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Byron, just a question for you.
Yes.
What's the enforcement on that after the after the expiration of the special use permit?
If it was not to be cleaned up?
Correct.
We would cite an NOV through our zoning enforcement officer, and that would be citation after citation. We would find them and then they would go to court and they would deal with it there.
All right, so there's an enforcement mechanism?
Yes, there is.
Thank you. Commissioner Ernst.
Byron, these are, this is an after the fact, the deed's already been done and we're trying to fix that. And we usually don't do this because it doesn't work out well. We had a concrete company here six months ago or whatever. If they have problems during the two years, what are our options?
It can be brought, Byron, toy planted in Harman, can be brought back to you or actually we actually brought back to the Board of Commissioners directly, would skip you guys and be brought back for revocation. So if there's issues with the violation of that the terms of their condition, they violated any terms or condition, they can be brought back for revocation through the Board of Commissioners, either by a complaint. You guys or staff, we see something we can bring it back.
Okay, and it looks like they've had a few issues, but none were related to this, correct? Had a pool and a couple of other things.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Ms. Marshall, do you have a?
I do have a question. I I have a question on behalf of my clients. So as for, you know, there's staff recommendations, as long as they're abiding by the staff recommendations, is that, does that suffice?
Well, it keeps you off the naughty list, but I'm gonna go to Mr. Toy and get a better clarification.
Fair enough.
If you, if you're complying with the stipulations in the staff report, then no, you're not gonna go out and actively cite you for another violation. But if you're violating anything in that, then yes, we can do that.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion unless there are no other questions. Or unless there are more questions, excuse me. Mr. Ward?
I move to approve special use permit two zero two two dash one zero eight, subject to staff stipulations and approval.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward for approval. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Strauss.
Yes.
I'm used to Commissioner Jones being right up there. Go on. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Ward for approval, seconded by Commissioner Strauss. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth. Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P twenty twenty-two dash one oh eight for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January twenty-sixth, seven P M. before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Our next application is special use permit S P twenty twenty-two dash one oh nine. Sherry Bailey Scott, home occupation special use permit to operate a chiropractic office at fifty-three thirty-one Miami Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three. The application other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott, I've got you queued up ready to speak. Go ahead and give us your name, please, address, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Hi, Sherry Bailey Scott. Um, I go by Sherry Scott in my practice. But, um, I've been a chiropractor for almost twenty-five years and in Wyandotte County for eight and a half, I was over in the, um, shopping center by amigos. Um, anyway, I like to, um, operate my office out of my home. Um, I see one patient at a time, plenty of room for parking. But again, if anybody overlaps, it's just because one is coming as one is leaving. And I just want to contribute to the community and that that's about it.
Okay, and just for the record, please, uh, give us your, your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, five three three one Miami Avenue.
Okay, so it is the subject property as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? I'm seeing none. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Online? Seeing none, we'll go to, uh, Mister Toy and get his comments. Almost promoted you.
Not the director. Um, the staff work, as it says in the staff work, one client at a time, parking off street, so there's parking the driveway available. Um, with that, staff recommends approval, some of the stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for? The, almost did it again. Mister Toy? You notice Janet laughed the loudest when I almost called you Ms. Director.
I'm sure she did.
Yes. Any questions for staff? I'm seeing none, so I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit two zero two two dash one zero nine, subject to staff stipulations.
A motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P twenty twenty-two dash one oh nine, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, this will be heard once again on January twenty-sixth at seven P M. before the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit S P twenty twenty-two dash one thirteen. Lynn Beaver, special use permit to operate an event space at twenty-nine fifty-one South Thirty-four Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three. The application other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address.
Members of Plan and Commission, Bill Hutton appearing on behalf of Lynn Beaver, owner of Stone Cliff Barn. My home address is one three nine three nine parallel here in K C K. And my office address is five oh nine Armstrong, also in K C K. Uh, Ms. Beaver is here tonight. That property is located at twenty-nine fifty-one South Thirty-four Street. And Tom Stible in my office also appears here. Like, my client is requesting a special use permit to operate an event space on this nine and a half acre site located just to the north of Miriam Lane. The property is zoned agricultural and has three structures on it at this time. There's a house on Thirty-four Street. There is a horse barn on the southwest side of the property adjacent to Thirty-four Street. And there is a finished, uh, barn or an event space barn, whatever you want to call it, uh, located on the northern side of the property. What is proposed is an agriculturally oriented event center. What my client is proposing, we believe is the highest and best use of this nine and a half acre property. She's proposing to maintain the agriculture nature of the property with native food forest spaces. The finished barn will serve as an indoor event center. The outdoor spaces, uh, native grasslands and gardens will serve as an outdoor agritourism event space. The horse barn, which I alluded to, is, there are no horses in it now. It is strictly for storage. There is no intention nor is there any request to go ahead and return livestock to this property. This nine and a half acre, uh, could produce, uh, on a quarter of an acre, um, up to thirty-two additional homes in this area. We think this is a better use of keeping, uh, this area with the trees on the northern boundary line and the pond, which is the green, uh, space that's being circled by the cursor. Um, and, uh, you can see the current driveways and where, uh, the current finished barn is located with an entrance which is on the south side of the property. So it is away from the properties that are located, um, to the north. You can also see the tree line that has been put in. The reason that be kind of becomes relevant is I appeared on behalf of this same client nine years ago. Um, the barn at that point was not finished. Um, there had not been the improvements made there have been at this point. And there was no plan for agritourism or the native grasslands or the garden. My client's goal in the next three years is to reach a total of a hundred events per year. That'd be a combination of daytime, evening and weekend events. Weekday events would not end any later than ten P M. No later than midnight on weekends. The staff has already put together stipulations and we understand those, but I'm going to tell you what one of them is. All amplified musical entertainment shall be strictly limited to the inside of this private event space, this barn. This barn also, um, we would be limited to the total size of an event of one hundred based on the size of this particular barn. You can see we basically are proposing two different parking spaces. One which is on the west side of the property behind the, uh, what I'm gonna call the storage barn or the livestock barn, another one which is proposed, um, basically between the two barns. We think with that we could provide more than sixty spaces. Uh, it is discussed that um, those initially would not be paved. Um, we do understand per the requirement that they would have to be paved over time. And we would commit to do that, um, during the two years. This site is going to work directly with the Kansas City Farm School and Common Ground. Um, Alicia Ellington is the contact person for both of those programs, which are located Forty-sixth and Gibbs Road here in K C K. She'll help with the greenhouse production and vegetable guarding part of the farm to table project. Alicia also attended the neighborhood meeting at Stone Cliff Barn that we held on December twenty-first with many of these folks here. In addition, Courtney Masterson of Native Lands and Patty Ragsdale of Botanical Belongings are the consultants to the native grassland plantings. We have read the recommendations of staff regards this application and agreed to all the requirements. Um, like I said, the, the parking is the only thing that won't happen immediately. Again, no time, uh, no nighttime event would involve more than a hundred, uh, patrons. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Come to the mic.
I'm sorry, Mister Chairman, I do have Ms. Beaver and Mr. Stibro available for questions.
Okay.
But I'm not going to have them speak as to prolong this meeting.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, and we appreciate that. Any, anybody want to speak to this case? It, it, all those in favor, please come to the microphone. Anyone want to speak against? Okay, go ahead, please. Give me your name and address, please.
Fred Harmon, three three oh three Forest Avenue. I live, uh, approximately a hundred feet to the north of this event barn they're planning. And approximately nine years ago, as, uh, the attorney spoke to, we, uh, were asked this same question. There are a few modifications from the last time. However, we, as a community, feel that this proposal is not conducive to a neighborhood setting. I myself have resided in the community for forty years. We all enjoy the peaceful and serene surroundings of this neighborhood. We feel this proposal will drastically alter the tranquility with excessive noise and traffic that we are not accustomed to. Nine years ago, the Beavers withdrew their petition in the face of the opposition that was put forward. We ask for this again, but that is entirely up to them. However, if they do decide, we will, uh, go forward as a community and are prepared to proceed to oppose this permit through the guidelines set forth by the Wyandotte County Commission.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, but I feel there, there are several others that do.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi there, um, Jason Winfrey, twenty-nine oh five South Thirty-fourth Street. And I'm, I'm neither for or against, I just have some questions, I guess. It looks like a nice proposal for land to improve our neighborhood. Um, I guess I'm concerned because, um, there are some neighbors that tend to have some parties that last for a long time and music. You can just hear across. I was just wanting to know where they're having this event. Is it somehow soundproofed? It's like, great, you're going to have it inside of a barn, but loud music blaring inside of a barn, I'm sure travels. So that's my main question is like, what kind of, um, things are being done to keep the sound in, because I figured it's probably going to be like weddings and stuff and people partying, so the idea of going till midnight is, doesn't sound so great.
Okay, we'll get you some answers. Thank you.
Kill Martin, thirty-two eleven Forest Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. Uh, yeah, I was just noticing the proposal in the, uh, lower right-hand corner. There's also a house he didn't mention being built there in the proposal. Um, when the Beavers have before had parties on this place, uh, whether private or not private, we don't know. The sound has been like really loud. It doesn't go away. And, uh, we, we called them and asked them to, you know, keep it down maybe a little bit. Our neighbors, we have parties sometimes and, um, if we have, uh, something wrong, we can go and, uh, address that with them and ask them to, you know, keep it down. But the Beavers are wanting to create a business, which we will not be able to go to the Beavers and ask them to keep it down. We will have to somehow figure out a way to ask them to keep it down, which is, you know, they're not a neighbor. It's a business in a neighborhood. So I would, I would be against, um, this proposal. It seems like a bad idea in a, in a quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Either one, go, go ahead and, well, you still go ahead and come on up and you guys can be up front waiting to, waiting to speak. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Dickerson. I live in thirty-three five South Thirty-third Street.
Okay, can you tell me your name again?
Mary, Marie.
Okay.
And, um, yes, we live on the Thirty-third Street. And I think this, uh, love, love deal because for the Beavers and for us, because they are having already a lot of restriction for her, their business. And that means they are not going to have, uh, have every weekend of the year a wedding there. That means like they say, uh, we are going to hear the fireworks and, um, and all that, uh, noise affect everyone. And also I think they already affect the fauna, because like two years ago, we used to see some kind of beers and now it's not, uh, it's, we, we can see in that sparrow our neighbor. But I think, yes, in the parking lot, where the, I don't know how many, that's why I say, I don't, I'm just a question for them. If they are who marketing hire for make the, how to say the profit for them, like, uh, because they, how much they expect to have and that kind of event, they are going to be so restricted. Like, uh, because they are going to expect fifteen guests, it's not a deal for them, neither, neither for our neighbor. And, uh, but that is the thing, where is the parking lot? And, uh, well, that is, we can not say is like a safe neighbor, but you, because we hear some during the nights of the, the police running and, uh, and I, either people, they are going to see they have some kind of events and maybe, I don't know, the, the crime will be high.
Okay, we'll try to get you some answers to a couple of questions. All right, thank you.
My name is Hannah Montington. I live at thirty-two eleven Forest. Um, I just wanted to say that the residents chose this neighborhood. Um, many of them have lived there for more than two decades. Um, they understood that it was a quiet residential area and not a commercial one. Uh, this permit will allow a commercial special event center to be operating among single-family homes, bringing commercial traffic noise into our quiet neighborhood. It doesn't align with the best interests of the investment already made by the homeowners who live there. Neither does it benefit their potential future resale value of homeowners into the neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name is Joshua Montington, one nine three five High Drive, Leavenworth, Kansas, but recently at three two one one Forest Avenue for over twenty years. Um, at first I just want to say that I don't think there's any sort of malignant or malicious purpose on the behalf of the applicants. I mean, I, I think business is good. It serves a great role in the community. Um, I just think with regards to the particular location and the type of business that being, is being proposed, it's at odds with the interests of the, those homeowners in the neighborhood. Um, and just once the business gets started, there has to be an emphasis on maximizing profit. Most of us are business owners or work for business owners and realize that business has to make money. The focus has to be on that rather than pleasing the neighbors. When you're dealing with homeowner, homeowner, there's a relationship there. Um, so I recognize that the Beavers made a significant investment. Uh, but the time of the investment, they were aware of the zoning. They were aware of the situation. Obviously, they hope to see that changed. Um, but I think it should be acknowledged that, uh, these homeowners there here have also made a significant investment, probably something that can't be measured in millions of dollars or in terms of legends style economic development. But it's a significant investment for them, probably a large percentage of their wealth. Um, but also an investment in their quality of life. And really, their vision of the American dream. So I'd just ask that that would be considered. I'm opposed to the event space here because I do not think, um, it can, it can coexist, uh, in a way that honors the good faith commitment that the homeowners in the area have made. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead and give me your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Elia Andrade. I live at thirty-ten South Thirty-first Street. Um, I'm opposed to the project because first of all, we live directly behind the property. And the amount of noise that comes from that property is too much. And then second off, um, there is no fencing back there. There's no way to prevent people from coming onto our property. So I'm opposed. And then two years ago, we contacted them, the Beavers, that a roll of hay had rolled onto our property. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't affect us in any way. But we contacted them and we never received any response. We never received any response from them. But with that, um, the amount of noise that comes from it is too much. And then with parties, who knows how many people would be involved? But, um, sometimes at parties, there's alcohol involved and things can get out of hand. And if that does occur, um, people would, you know, wander off and possibly wander off onto our property because there's there's no fencing, there's no tree line, there's no way to prevent that.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick question for are there parties being hosted there now?
No, not now, but they had one recent, oh, a couple months back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah, Chairman Carson, just so you know, I was going to ask something similar to what you just asked.
I'm sorry, I missed you, Commissioner Jones. I apologize.
That's okay. I thought I saw in the report, my question was similar to yours. I had just wanted clarification on when the folks that were just at the mic, was the noise attributable to this applicant or the previous owner? Because I know there were some noise issues with the previous owner. So but then I think I heard their response. This was about a month ago. So then that would be with the current folks. Because there was some previous.
That is what I heard, yes. But I'll I'll try to get you clarification, Commissioner Jones. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Go ahead and give me your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy Fuller. I live at thirty-three oh, seven Forest Avenue, right behind north of the property. My concern not only is that they're gonna have a lot of extra traffic and noise and population and all that, but in a residential, they also are talking about this grassland.
Native grass, native grass.
Native grassland shows and tours and whatever, that's going to be during the day. So they're not only going to have business during the day, all day in and out. They're proposing having their events at night and their business during the day. And there's just no way that our area is gonna handle that kind of traffic or noise. Um, they've had several private parties there that that weren't real quiet. It's just, it's not a good fit for residential. We're right, less than probably let's say two hundred foot, a hundred foot behind that barn. And whether they're inside the barn or outside the barn, we're gonna hear it. So I just would like to register my opposition.
That's what we're here for. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Yes.
Mark Monnington, thirty-two eleven Forest Avenue, TCK, uh, since ninety-nine, lived there. As Fred said, we addressed this nine years ago about right now. And, um, we raised concerns because we didn't think that the business that we're talking about is going to be conducive with a neighborhood. Because of the noise, because of the traffic, because of the interaction between residential and neighbor. You're all, all of us are going to go home tonight and hopefully go home to a quiet residence, be able to get to bed.
After the night I've had, I hope so.
I, yeah, I appreciate, I do want to say I appreciate you all's service to us. Um, I wrote this email to Angela Markley, our commissioner on October fifth, twenty nineteen. I never sent it because I was, I thought, I'm 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 just frustrated and upset because of the way this has gone down. But this thing keeps coming up. Dear Angela, sorry to bother you. It's eleven fifteen P M. On Saturday night, October fifth, twenty nineteen. The walls are vibrating with the bass and the strobe lights are flashing on the house outside. My family would be in bed because we have to be up early tomorrow to lead worship at our church. But sleeping here right now is not possible. I have to admit, it's weird to be at that time sixty-three years old and feel powerless to do something in my own home. Our concerns about the Beavers having having events at the barn are now totally justified. I called Mr. Beaver at ten, ten P M. And calmly explained that the music was really loud. He told me that it would be winding down very soon. I appealed to him, explaining that none of the neighbors want to take anything away from someone's wedding. We're neighbors. But here we are, asking for things to wind down, having been put in that position by this business. Our neighbors called the police a little, our neighbors called the police a little after ten P M., complaining about the noise. But the police are busy and we really don't want to be calling them when they have more important business protecting others. After some folks over there shot off the fireworks between ten and then thirty, we thought that might be the finale. From there, the music actually got louder. So I attempted tempted to call Mr. Beaver again at eleven. He did not answer his phone. Because he's taking care of his business. I then made the decision to call the police. The dispatcher said they had gotten several calls and were dispatching officers, but they were currently busy. That's what we would expect them to do, be taking care of more important things than this. All of this to say, I, all this to say that the Beavers are proceeding to do the very thing Wyandotte County said they cannot do. We are the ones whose peace is disturbed. Where are we to go to get away from the noise and the flashing strobe lights or the traffic or the business? The Beavers and anyone else at the party or this business can leave that noise and lights and go to their homes anytime they wish. We do not have that freedom. That's the decision you all are making. We look to those who have voted in been voted into positions of authority in Wyandotte County to uphold the laws we all choose to live under. Finally, the noise and light stopped a little after eleven-thirty. Whether as a result of the officers or the Beaver schedule, I do not know. The question is, how and why did we get to this point? We neighbors do not wish to hinder the Beavers. When they held an event a few weeks ago during this time, we did not make a stink about it. As the tents in this past week, this time in October, went up, we anticipated they were preparing perhaps for a wedding for a family member or a close friend. And that's actually what it was. Again, we attempted to bear with them. When we drove drove by that day, we saw officers in uniform and chauffeured buses. We thought this was going to be quite a shindig. The disturbing thing was the sound level of the band that vibrated inside the house. The trees are not going to hinder that. The realization of our concerns was much greater than even what we had originally anticipated in twenty-fourteen when we fought this the first time. The Beavers that we feared were unwilling to do anything, another concern we raised in twenty-fourteen before the city council. And just as we anticipated, calling the police fails to be a timely and satisfactory recourse. The inability of the police to respond on a timeline that will matter. By the time the officers have attended and are free to address this level of disturbance, it's all but over and our evening's ruined. And what if dealing with the disturbance is what keeps those officers from a really serious matter? One that involves someone we all care about. This evening that I'm talking about, the business was happy, the customers were happy. But the neighborhood had been left disturbed. One thing you can be assured of, if you let this slide, the Beavers or someone like them will be coming to do an event in your neighborhood and with a commercial business, whether you like it or not. Couple of things to close. Mr. Hutton said at the meeting we had with him that normally codes are not enforced. That's just what he said. Codes are not enforced. Mr. Stible, I think it is, said, this thing is just getting started. That wasn't comforting to us. Hundred events, wow. And it's just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone online want to speak? Okay, we're going to have the applicant representative come back up to the mic and can you to address some of the concerns? Can we start off? Have there been any commercial events at the at the event space?
The event that these folks are talking about was John and Lynn Beaver's daughter's wedding in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, and then what about noise, fireworks, parking, those kinds of things, concerns brought about by the neighbors?
Well, there's no question that the Beaver's wedding was a big deal. That I think we'd all agree on that. And as we discussed in this meeting, and and I certainly will tell you, part of the conversation was taken out of context. But the discussion was that the Beavers would have been better suited if they had gone ahead and gotten with the neighbors beforehand before that wedding. And they did not do so. And as I told these folks, I believe I said, that was an error on their part. John Beaver, uh, who was owns the property with Lynn Beaver, was also at the neighborhood meeting with these folks. So, uh, but that's the event they're talking about. Otherwise, there have not been commercial events there. There have been, um, events during the day when kids have been there with this farm group that I referred to earlier.
The agritourism?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. And again, that we're not seeking rezoning of this property to commercial. It is, it will remain zoned agricultural.
I'm sorry, I did misspeak when I misspeak when I said commercial.
Okay, and just that was my clarification.
Yes.
Um, and again, uh, the events would be limited to hundred folks. The other question, and you may have other ones, uh, the gentleman asked about outside noise and everything else. Well, this barn is now finished. It has finishes on the inside, the entrance to the barn. The only entrance to that barn is on the south side. So there would not be doors open on the north side or on the east or west side of this building. So we think that addresses that there is parking that would be, again, there's no parking on the north side of the building. Uh, their parking is all on the south side or on the east side of the building. And we would have no outside music, only be inside the facility.
All right, can you address some of the other debris, shipping? I don't know if there are shipping containers out there.
Okay, there are two, there, there's no debris issues. There's some construction materials.
There we go. Of tomato, tomato.
No, no, I I I would, I wouldn't call it debris, only because it has value.
Right.
But there are two shipping containers that will be removed. That was one of the conditions of this, and those can be removed within the next ten days.
All right. I think that's everything. Commissioners, did you have anything that I have not followed up on that I need to before I go to staff, before I go to staff? I'm sorry, Commissioner Beth.
Yeah, is there people living on, do the Beavers live on that property?
No, there is one, uh, property on a Thirty-Fourth Street that is actually occupied by a friend of the Beavers. Before I forget, there was a discussion, a gentleman asked me, the on these plans, there was a plan for another house. That is not included in these plans. So there are just the three, Mr. Beth, three properties or three buildings on this property. There's what I call the finished barn, the storage barn, and the one house, um, which is, uh, being lived in by a friend of the Beavers.
So one residential structure.
So they're onsite resident?
Onsite, yes.
Okay, and the the barn, I I'd actually go by and looked at the property and it has like double doors in the front which face west, so they would be closed during parties and stuff.
Oh, absolutely. The entrance, the only entrance is on the south side. In fact, when we had the meeting, that's where we held the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, have I addressed any other concerns?
Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Related to the, you said there was no plan on building a second home. Is there going to be a plan in the future? You said not at this time. So anything going forward, intent to build a second home because only is allowed to have one single dwelling on this parcel?
We understand that. And and the point that we made, that was rendering drawn by, uh, the folks who put the whole plan together. And we understand that if there was going to be any other kind of home on this property, would have to be replatted to allow that. And that is not our intention.
Chairman, I got two more questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Related to the, uh, the building itself, the barn, have, did you get a building permit to change the storage barn to be occupied or habitable, not habitable, but occupied by anyone or another?
The storage barn that we're talking about, which I'm going to call the livestock barn. There's been no alterations nor intention to do any alterations other than just preserve it.
Okay, so the event space barn, though, building permit for that or no building permit?
Honestly, that was, all that was done before the application was made in two thousand and thirteen. And I honestly can't answer that. I don't know.
And looking at a permit or permit database and not seeing a building permit for that structure, the only thing I see from twenty-twelve is for livestock or storage barn, and that's it.
Well, I can't tell you, I can't tell you about that, Mr. Toy, so I don't have to answer that question.
Good, thank you. Sorry, one last question. I'm related to any soundproofing. What what has been done on the inside of that building to prevent sound from, because as the as the neighbor said, base trouble?
Let me ask my client, is the inside of that barn insulated? So I'm going to repeat that since there's some people online.
Yes, thank you.
My client, Lynn Beaver, who's the owner of the property, there is two forms of insulation or spray insulation. And then there's a separate insulation inside the barn, which is not just for soundproofing, but also for saving on heating.
Weatherproofing. All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Toy?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, James Malloy, uh, planning in urban design. Do want to point out, I have had a conversation with the client's representatives. They will be, they will be submitting for a final development. Let me take this off, for a final development plan afterwards, just to get, you know, assuming the S U P is approved, they'll be submitting for a final development plan to get some to get some more of the details for this plan, um, you know, finalized and, you know, before the public. I will note that it has been determined that the second house pending a pending a plat or some other subdivision would not be built until it is platted or subdivided. So I just wanted to put that on record.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones, you have a comment?
I have a question, yes. So can I get some confirmation, there are not going to be activities, commercial or otherwise, that are going to be held outside the barn, the barn?
There will not be, uh, events with, number one, there will be a fence in the outside area during the daytime. There also can be people outside, but any live music must be inside the barn. And we are limit to limited on any events that involve the use of the finished barn to a hundred.
Okay, thank you.
What about pyrotechnics? I mean, there was fireworks at the one event.
There was fireworks, the one event, there will be, there, there are, as we, as we all should know, there are limitations on when fireworks can be shot off in Kansas City, Kansas. My clients will not allow, nor, and we fully understand that if fireworks were shot off anytime other than in very limited time allowed by the city of Kansas City, Kansas over the Fourth of July. That would result in a code violation and would be prevent them from getting their special use permit
Sure.
renewed or approved. So there's absolutely, there's nothing in anything that they're sending out to folks either from the farm to garden or in each other groups that says, and you can go ahead and shoot off fireworks. In fact, it will say they are prohibited.
Right, and I know you've got your hand up, but we've already gone to the public comments, so that is closed. So we're now going to go to Director, excuse me. I'm sorry, that's going to go to Ms. Commissioner Ward, and then we'll go to Mr. Toy for his comment.
Much appreciated.
Mr. Hudson, real quick, um, I know one of the people brought up, um, obviously, we start having parties now, call involved, security is a big deal. Their plans to have security at every event.
Yes, my client is would contract with approved caterers who would have to meet the city requirements for having security on staff. My client is not applying for, um, a either a liquor license or a caterer's license. That would be up to an approved caterer would have to meet those requirements.
Okay.
And we would require the approved caterer to meet city requirement.
Security requirements, okay.
And again, for the events in the daytime that are the agritourism, you wouldn't have to have a caterer's license or liquor license or beer license or anything else.
Correct.
And there's no exception. We're not doing wine events to circumvent that, which, as you know, occurs in some wineries. You don't have to have that. This is not a proposed winery. We're not proposing to have wine events here, um, like there are in some of the wineries here in town.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Mr. Toy for his comments and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand the neighbors' concerns about the commercial type use of this property and how it's being used now and how it could be used in the future. We kind of have to separate the agricultural use of the property and the agricultural uses that may occur, such as hosting classes or things like that, separate from the event space itself and related to the more weddings, birthday parties, bridal showers and those things. As pertains to that, the staff would like to put additional stipulations in the report. And I think starting with number 21, or sorry, 22, excuse me, no fireworks may be shot off or displayed unless it's compliant with the fireworks ordinance specifically. Number 22, sorry, 23, this permit may be brought back for revocation anytime if they violate any of the 20, now 23, 22 conditions of approval. And staff like to make, amend stipulation number 20 for two years instead of make it one year. So this sweep back before you within one year to see how this is going. If it's not going well, you got the choice not to extend or allow their renewal to go on. But one year, I think, is a good benchmark right now to see how things go, because with the, with the comments that have been heard tonight, I think that's, that's the best thing going right now.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Toy, Commissioner Straws?
This was actually before we got to him, but I'm glad he spoke, so I can address a couple of things, because this is kind of right up my alley. As you know, Mr. Carson, as far as events go, I think I'm hearing two major concerns from the public. One is sound, number one, and then traffic, number two, and I'm not advocating for a traffic study, I'll say that upfront. But I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with voting on this without, you know, somebody doing a sound, some, somebody go out there and listen to music in that neighborhood with the neighbors. That's the biggest complaint I'm hearing right now, is it's just too loud. And so if that building is, is that loud in a residential neighborhood with, with homes around it, and they, they say they've done something to, to improve that, but I'm not comfortable with voting on something like that unless we know that that's not going to be an issue one, one week or one month from now. That's just my comment to staff, because this literally is my area of expertise, so.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments, Commissioner Ernst? You're muted, Commissioner Ernst. Sorry about that.
No, it'll take a little, it'll take a little of the huffiness out of my voice. I appreciate the changes Byron just made. I think those are helpful. However, a month ago, right or wrong, we approved entertainment a mile or so from there, on 34th Street, up the hill and down a little. And our concern at that time was that they keep the music inside concrete and brick building, because outside would be loud. Since we've kind of established that this place, inside or outside, is loud to begin with, how do we justify that? Like Commissioner Straws said, how do we know what we're getting into?
Is that a question for staff?
Yeah, sorta.
Okay. Since I don't want to answer it, Mr. Toy? Or, or Mr. Waters? I mean, I guess from a consistency standpoint and a, you know, do we set a precedence?
And I guess, you know, all I could say is, you know, looking at the code, so prima facie violation if sound is heard across the property boundaries, so you know, they'd be subject to those code violations going forward, but other than literally having a staff member go out there and while they're playing music, I don't know how you would determine that.
Do you have any additional comments, Mr. Toy?
No. Legal counsel kind of spelled it out perfectly.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
I just wanted to say my question and comment was in line with Commissioner Straws and Commissioner Ernst. And don't know, because we do want to be consistent, and I think sometimes we not think differently, but you, you, you start wondering about these things, and, and in this case, we're talking about acoustics because of the complaints of the neighbors. But I don't have a way normally in these situations that we can be, the applicant can somehow be preventive, where acoustics can be measured so that when the decibels get too loud, so to speak, there's a way, and I know Commissioner Straws, this is more in your bailiwick, but how do you, how do, how do we kind of ensure that it's proactive as opposed to reactive? Because if we can avoid the noise complaints and getting beyond a decibel level that we should, that would be, in my mind, the preferred thing. Oh, let me just say this, beyond that, I also like what Byron Toy suggested, yet, you know, we do, again, want to be consistent. So I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, because I was thinking about the one year, two thing, and then also that they could be, now that you want to approve something and then, you know, it'd be shut down at any time, but if there's no other way to deal with this, I think that would help incite the applicant, should it be approved, to not go past a certain decibel level. And the onus would be on them to measure that to make sure that they don't go past that.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions for staff? Saying none, I will entertain a motion when appropriate. The wording is in your packet if you need any assistance for either. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones, you are muted?
Because of what I heard Byron Toy say, that I think will help deal with the issues, I'm going to go ahead and say, I'm going to make a motion to approve case number SP 2022-113, subject to staff stipulations and comments, inclusive of only approving the special use permit for one year as opposed to two, so that would be amending item number 20, and then adding items number 22 and 23, as suggested by Mr. Toy.
All right, thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Jones with the added stipulations and modifications made by staff. Janet, do you have all that?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Beth. Discussion on the motion for approval. Saying none, roll call.
Straws?
No.
Whoops, excuse me, just a second. Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hey.
Jones?
I.
Mr. Chairman, we have six present. It does take four to pass a motion. I have three in favor and two opposed.
I'm sorry, how many do we have present? Do we have a vote from everyone?
Yeah, we have, and, but we have six members present, and it's three to two, and it takes four to pass a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, Chair rules in favor of the motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2022-113 for one year, subject to the revised conditions passes, four in favor and two opposed.
This will be heard once again on January 26 at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners. Want to thank everybody for their testimony on this case.
Our next application is special use permit, SP 2022-114, Mike Odell with Holiday Sand and Gravel. Special use permit to operate a sand excavation and sand processing operation at 4403 North 42nd Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated January 9, 2023, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo, the notices to property owners, and, Mr. Chairman, I did receive a letter in support from Todd Geiger with Geiger Ready Mix after the packets went out, and also received an email today from the Board of Public Utilities with additional conditions of approval they would like for this application, which Mr. Toy will address.
All right, thank you. If, excuse me, Janet, if I could just ask everybody to take your conversations out to the lobby, we would appreciate that. Hopefully, you guys can get together and get something worked out going forward, but we need you to move outside for right now. Thank you.
Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Odell?
Kevin Fouts.
Okay, go ahead. Give us your name and address, please, sir. For the record.
I'm Kevin Fouts, president of Holiday Sand and Stone at 7355 West 162nd Terrace, Overland Park, Kansas. Here with me tonight are my vice presidents, Mike Odell, Kyle Garstein, sales manager Aaron Fouts, mining engineer Brian Sires.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, when the speaker at the microphone turns their head, those of us on Zoom cannot hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just need you to face me when you talk. I know, just, they're back behind you. Thank you.
I thought they might have left after the last.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
We get to do this every month, so you know, we're used to it.
Yeah. Well, now you know who, that, that was our team for the project we've been working on for the last 13 years with them, on this for quite a while. Our purpose tonight is to cure the future sand source for the infrastructure, concrete, asphalt, brick masons for the city of Kansas City metro area. On average, there's three tons of sand needed for every person in Kansas City. I mean, everything starts with sand. I mean, there's not one thing that's built that isn't made with sand, or you got there on the sand with the roads, concrete, asphalt and all that. Our project has become necessary due to significant fundamental changes in the source of sand in Kansas City. And who we are, we're Holiday Sand and Gravel. We were founded in 1928. Our roots right here in Bonner Springs, where I grew up. We dredge the Kansas River, provided both sand and gravel, concrete, asphalt construction for all those years, and we have a, we've been on the Missouri River since 1971. We currently operate three dredges in the Kansas City metro area. And this is why we're here today, and Randy Gordon's going to take over.
All right, great, thank you. I appreciate your comment about Bonner Springs. I was raised there also, and so holiday sand and gravel is something I've grown up with, so. Exactly, thank you. Go ahead, sir, your name and address.
I'm Randy Gordon. I'm a principal with BHC. Our office here is at 712 State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. First of all, what Holiday Sand and Gravel has brought before you is this project that, in fact, would help secure a long-term source of sand for the greater Kansas City area. That would be done by locating this project within the Missouri River floodplain, utilizing electric-powered dredges and sorting equipment to accomplish a sand pit, my, a sand pit, to mine that sand. But as a result, in the end, create a conservation area that provides some environmental benefits to the community. Overall, 458 acres is the site. Approximately 60% of that is agricultural use today. Would be dredged over time, and this is again a many-year process, and ultimately create a lake almost 300 acres in size when they're complete. In addition to the lake, they would plant various species of grasses and trees that provide habitats. And that is done concurrent with the dredging operations that they've progressed. They, basically, as they finish an area and move on, they can start restoration of, of where they had previously been marking. What you see here is a, is a 3D rendering. That is where the sand classifying area would be in the southeast corner of the lake, the project area in relative proximity to the riverbank, and then on the riverbank, building a barge, a, a, a dock and a loading system to put the sand on barges. This creates kind of the opportunity for the site for gathering sand, mining sand, is the fact that they're able to transport this material by barge and not by trucks over local streets, and this is kind of unusual. Most facilities have to. In this case, they would be able to avoid that kind of an impact to the neighborhood and unified government streets. The intention is the startup would, of the operation would be approximately August of 2024, again, 18 months from now. We'll touch on a little bit of the process that remains to be done, but we recognize local permitting is where everything starts and ends. Overall, we're talking decades, approximately 40 years for this overall project to go from start to completion of removing sand. The, the pace at which that happens really just depends on market. How fast is sand needed to serve the Kansas City market cost-effectively? They've laid it out in approximately 60 acre phases, and that would add up to about five phases over time. Hours of operation, again, they start by stripping the overburdened topsoil and stockpiling that, that kind of process, and then later, when they're finished with dredging and reclamation, those activities are typical 7:00 AM, 5:00 PM weekdays, Monday through Friday. The dredging itself, processing of the sand and then loading barges could be from 10 to 24 hour a day, six days a week, just again, depending on demand. But we want to recognize there may be unusual times in which operations on Sundays may be required, and that, for instance, could be because they are subject to flooding. They may need to make preparations prior to a flood event to prepare the site for inundation, and then again, once the water's receding, it may require some additional work to get back into operation promptly. And then there may be some unique demands from their clients they may need to accommodate. So just in fairness, again, you see the site here, site address 4403 North 42nd Street. Access, we show on the graphic, the bright green line comes originally via North 55th, cuts across and via Dixon, Dickinson, as it crosses the railroad tracks, they would provide an improved private access to road or driveway to reach the sand operation area and the loading area. As we go forward, recognize how much of a process and investment that Holiday Sand has put into developing this project for approval. Since 2009, Holiday Sand has been engaging with different agencies, including Board of Public Utilities, Unified Government, Army Corps of Engineers and others. Over that 13-year period, Holiday Sand has had over 40 submittals, meetings, and review sessions with the different stakeholders and permitting agencies. Newfields Environmental has been the primary technical expert when it comes to evaluating potential impacts processes in the plan overall, and have worked extensively with Board of Public Utilities and their own consultants to address concerns and provide additional documentation. So, talking about BPU, they have facilities in the area. They certainly have vested interest in what occurs here, and so Holiday Sand acknowledges then and have, have made several different adjustments to the proposed plan to try and address the concerns expressed by Board of Public Utilities. Holiday Sand has in fact moved the proposed location of the site half a mile further downstream or east from the BPU's wells that are located near, just north of the Il Nerman Power Plant. Il Nierman Power Plant. Originally, the proposal was we would have a harbor, which means a direct connection, water connection from the river. Into the dredge area, so the barges could actually come off the river to load. There was concerns from BPU in terms of pollutants and so since that time. Holiday has proposed to change that and make it a closed lake where there's no direct connection to the river. They have all, Holiday has also agreed to remove diesel equipment from their dredge and their processing plant and use all electric. To be supplied by BPU from nearby power. We've addressed a detailed flood response plan and. Holiday has agreed to provide environmental protection insurance policy. That would be available for BPU and Unified Government case of any incidents. In addition to those particular study efforts with BPU. Overall, we've also looked at concerns about flood flow. And potential erosion across the floodplain in the vicinity of the sand pit. If that embankment stability. Southern Star Central Gas has a pipeline located south of the proposed site, working with them to make sure those concerns were addressed. The Steamboat Arabia, the original site of its wreck and removal falls within the project limits. We've identified that proposal is to. Leave that undisturbed and go around with a suitable setback, so dredging as it's approved would not get into. What remains of that original site that was not originally recovered by the Hollies. In addition to that, they provide a documentation about noise, air quality and traffic impacts from the proposed project. This probably be a good time to emphasize the fact that this process is inherently a wet process, not a dry process, so. The dust concerns are related primarily to the private access road in and out, just traffic. Across that and that would be addressed as part of the stipulations, conditions from staff. Water quality is certainly a great concern. Holiday has agreed to provide thirteen groundwater monitoring wells across the site. And sample those quarterly. Also sample the water within the sand pit. That quarterly water monitoring and sampling would continue not only throughout operation, but for another ten years. Once they've closed the site and stabilized it. In addition, there will also be soil testing and sampling done annually as well as. The area is currently agriculture predominantly, provide a, a rolling setback and per. Prevent any application of agricultural chemicals. Three years prior to that area being disturbed by the dredging activities. So we have in fact. Received a letter from Board of Public Utilities, a no objection letter. Copy's been provided to you, and again, that stipulates. Their interest in the quarterly test results and the insurance policy that Holiday has proposed to provide. Do want to touch just a little bit on the historical preservation concerns. I've had prior conversations with the state Historical Preservation Office regarding the Steamboat Arabia site. It's a matter of, right now, we're gonna avoid the issue for now by just a setback and not approaching, but. Long term, the ability is to reengage with them in decades from now, if we even get close and assess the situation at that time. And then the Quandero Town Site is in the general neighborhood, but eight tenths of a mile south, this should have no impact on that site whatsoever. So again, touching a little bit more on what Kevin Fouts talked about, why? Right, this is a lot of effort, thirteen years into this, but it's fundamental fact that prior to now. Holiday Sand was able to do a lot of dredging of sand out of the Missouri River and the Colorado River. Recently, the Corps of Engineers has been changing permit allowance and have reduced. The amount that they could remove from river by ninety percent, right? So down to ten percent of what they at one time could pull out of the river. The, you may have heard of the Missouri River Degradation Study the Corps of Engineers has conducted. As part of their outcome is reducing these permits and. The Corps does not anticipate there's any way to reverse that trend in the future. So this is one of the steps they're taking to mitigate the issue. What that means is. We have to find other places to find our sand. And so as Holiday anticipated this arrival since two thousand and seven, they've been looking for good local sources of sand. Up and down the Missouri River across the metro. This site has unusually good quality sand. That means for a given amount of disturbance, they can recover more useful material. Than other sites, and that's a good thing for everyone. This is again, one of the best options available for the three ready mix sites that operate here within the central area. Going forward and those again, whether we recognize it or not, provide benefits to every single one of us. One other point here is we're working in the floodplain. There's a certain limitation in terms of what other uses are suitable in the floodplain. This is certainly a, a useful way to gather benefits from it. So how will it benefit if it came in the city of Kansas? We're looking at a four-year source, local supports, cost-effective source for sand. That can be used for a wide range of construction projects, economic development. Certainly you see examples there before you. As well as serving the county's own infrastructure needs, all while. Basically avoiding creating the kind of traffic impacts a traditional sand extraction project might have. And then it certainly supports local ready mix operators. Who generate their own tax revenues for Kansas City, Kansas, Wyandotte County and the surrounding metro areas.
Sir, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you have three minutes left in your presentation time.
Thank you. Let's see. So the other thing that we need to recognize is as this project completes, reaches completion, we will be creating a conservation area. So we're looking at almost three hundred acres of new lake and riparian habitat for trees. For animals moving forward. The, we have a provided a graphic illustrating fifty-two acres of agricultural land that would be converted to riparian forest. Thirty-two acres of pollinator prairie that would add nesting and foraging areas for. Various species and tens of acres of marsh wetland and other habitat for reptiles and fish spawning. Holiday has recent experience with other projects, both in Bonner Springs and Shawnee that have demonstrated this kind of restoration can provide. A positive attraction and habitat for hundreds of bird species, many not found anywhere else. So with that, improving water quality. Air quality, bank stabilization as we move forward, providing new habitat, providing opportunities for additional environmental improvements. After this stabilization is finished, it's also a new template maybe for park area. Access roads, boat ramps, either the lake or the riverbank. As well as river outlook opportunities. If the Unified Government is not interested in operating that kind of facility, there are a number of other eight private entities. The Nature Conservancy, Wildlife Parks and Tourism Ducks Unlimited that commonly take over maintenance of these. So with that conclusion. Again, over the past thirteen years, Holiday Sand has tried to work in very good faith and very actively. Address concerns with various stakeholders, especially BPU. And the Army Corps of Engineers to move to this point. We see many benefits. We tried to outline a few here for you to the community in general. To economic growth and maintenance of our existing infrastructure. We certainly appreciate your time. We recognize how late it is. We appreciate staff's extensive number of meetings as well. What questions can we?
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? You did mention is this is a forty-year project? So as far as the, the resulting lake, that would be at that, at the end of that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, I think I speak on behalf of Commissioner Beth and Commissioner Ernst to myself and that we hope that we will be able to enjoy that park and that lake. Then forty years from now, I think we'll, yep, fingers crossed, Commissioner Ernst. So yeah, we'll be planning on that, but any other questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Beth.
Okay, you're gonna transport the sand by barge, right? But where will that, if it's local, where would that barge offload the trucks to take the material in?
So that's gonna be sent downriver to the Riverside facility, shipped off and then distributed to customers from there.
Okay, yeah, my concern is the roads down to there are not gonna handle a lot of truck traffic and they're all residential that's. Gonna upset people if there's a lot of truck traffic going through there.
Absolutely.
And the police range, I guarantee, I guess, has already been taken into consideration.
Yes, and we're.
Cause it's on the west border of, of that area.
Yeah.
Hopefully they'll pave that road.
It'll be taken to Riverside, Missouri, is that what you're saying?
Pardon me?
You said it'll be going where?
To Riverside. Yep, downriver.
All right. Other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience that doesn't work for Holiday Sand, want to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Go ahead. Yes, name and address, please.
I'm Angela Laszlo.
Right.
City Chief Counsel, so I don't know.
I know, but I have to ask you, even though I know who you are, I still have to be.
I don't know if you want me to speak now or wait for staff.
Go ahead and speak.
Okay. As stated in your letter, that in your packet, there was a letter from the General Manager of the Board of Public Utilities, Bill Johnson. And that's dated September first of twenty twenty-two. And he sets out BPU's position of no objection to the issuance of a special use permit based upon the. Conditions that were put up earlier and I'll read those out in a minute. And there's one additional one we're going to ask for that we have already discussed with Holiday and they have no objection to that either. So these conditions are crucial to BPU's position of no objection. I will say Holiday has been great to work with. They have. You know, the, the list of exhibits doesn't really. Show you exactly how much work went into getting to this point. And so we just want to solidify all that work into these conditions. So the conditions that we would ask for would be first during the term of this permit. Holiday will procure and continuously maintain at its sole expense, a location-specific pollution legal liability. PLL Insurance Policy, which meets the requirements and exhibit B of the September first twenty twenty-two. Letter from BPU General Manager Bill Johnson. Two, Holiday shall adopt all assurances set out in the project development plan and obtain all such other permits as identified therein. Three, and this is the, the one that was not in the letter, but that we have discussed with Holiday. Holiday shall provide BPU all final governmental permits and updates of those permits. Four, Holiday shall provide for reasonable future reimbursements for BPU's future outside experts. Necessary to review project-related environmental reports or changes in project conditions. Five, Holiday will timely share its water quality monitoring results with BPU. As stated, those wells have already been agreed to and that's already begun. So those are the conditions that we would ask that be included in the special use.
And those have already been ran by the applicant and their agreeance to those?
That's correct. In fact, they help us, they help us draft.
And staff is aware of all of each, each of those. All right, great, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on behalf of this case for or against? Online, raise your hand. Seeing none, we will now go to Director Hand, who has joined us for his comments. Thanks for showing up. About ten minutes left. Glad to have you.
Thanks, Commissioner. I apologize. I was double booked this evening. Mr. Toy stood in for us. Again, before us, we have a special use permit for a sand mine. This is in a citywide, actually, let me pull up the. Sorry, our slots. All right. There we go. Again, we have a special use permit for a sand mine. This is in the citywide master plan area, really in the north midtown area, again in the, within the Oxbow here of the Missouri River. Excuse me. We've received one letter of support, no letters in opposition. There are no notices of violation of this project. Staff recommends approval with the additional. Conditions from the Board of Public Utilities. As well as some additional conditions that you can see in your staff report related to dust mitigation. As well as the reformation of the site, which has been discussed this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when appropriate.
Mr. Chair, we would just ask that the motion include the addition of the BPU conditions.
Correct. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve case number SP two zero two two dash one one four. Subject to the staff's stipulations and comments as outlined in the report, in addition to additional. Conditions listed in the letter from BPU also in the report.
All right, thank you. Well done. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones with the added stipulations requested by the BPU. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
It is with the admonition that we so enjoy letting Ms. Jones rush right in there. And get it, get all the details and then we're glad to second it.
Thank you, and I'll see you at that park in forty years. Okay, it's been moved and seconded for approval. Any just, no other discussion, we'll move to roll call, please.
Straws.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Beth.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-two dash one fourteen. Subject to the revised comments and suggestions, including the conditions from the BPU. Passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, January twenty-sixth at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you all. I will never take sand for granted at a beach ever again. Had no idea, three, three tons per person.
Wow. Our next. Our next application is plat twenty twenty-two dash zero three nine. Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting, preliminary and final plat to create three residential lots. At eight eleven North Fifty-Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated January nine, twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, you are up. Please name an address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson. I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, fourteen five hundred Parallel Road. Unit R, Baser, Kansas, six six zero zero seven. What our client is looking to do is he owns about twelve acres. They're off Fifty-Fifth Street and he's looking to split. The twelve acres into three new parcels ranging about three to five acres. They're not split evenly, but ranging in those areas. The plan is to keep them on septic as they meet the three acre mark. And I believe the plan is to all face them west to a North Fifty-Fifth Street. There is kind of a. Double right-of-way when it was originally platted. Where there's actually two right-of-ways on each side of the properties for a couple of the lots. But I believe the intention is to face them west to Fifty-Fifth Street. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone want to speak to this case for or against? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Larry Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for your patience.
North Fifty-Fifth. I've got some property that connects to the eight eleven. I just had the question, is he. Plan on a single family per five acres or multiple flat drawings?
Uh, well, let's, let's just get you an answer right now, since you're the last one here and you've been so patient. I'm gonna just dispense with protocol. Mr. Thompson, you know what the plans are for the lots in terms of residential or multifamily?
Uh, yes, single family.
Single family residence.
That should answer it.
Anything else we can do for you?
No, that's it.
Feel like we should do something else for you? I hope that was the answer you wanted, cause you waited long enough to get it.
My wife told me to come down, so we could plan what. My wife told me to come down and saw we could plan what we got three or four properties around the, you know, that place. And we didn't want to have a. A bunch of, you know, it's like in the country, you know, but.
Sure.
They start throwing in the streets are so narrow.
I think she just wanted to get rid of you for the evening, sir, to be quite honest with you.
She has two grandkids.
All right, well, thank you for being here. No, 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 thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this case? Seeing none, we'll go to director. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this preliminary and final development plan to split one parcel into three lots. This is in the citywide master plan area. In the midtown, we received no letters of support, no letters in opposition, no notices of violation, no public comment until this evening. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Straws.
I saw moved that we approve plat twenty twenty two dash zero three nine according to staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Straws. Is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, there is.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Beth.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve plat twenty twenty two dash zero three nine, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Will this be heard once again, Janet?
No.
No, this will not. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I was waiting for you to say that so I could catch you.
Nah, yeah, I wouldn't go to fall for that again. So that concludes our regular agenda. We just have the election.
No, no, we have to go back. You're wrong. We have to go back to the application that the applicant did not show on. And that's special use permit SP twenty twenty two dash zero eight nine, Mr. Falcon. Special use permit for the temporary use of land to keep two storage containers. On a residential lot at four 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 North Ten Street.
Yes, I forgot this one. Okay, and it's my understanding, Mr. Falcon is not still in the audience. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I did not see him and he has not responded anyway to the department for any documentation or any requests. Is that correct?
That's correct, too.
Director Hand, you want to go ahead and present on this case?
Of course. Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Design. Again, what you have before you is a special use permit for a temporary land. This is a result of an enforcement action. Mr. Falcon has two. Shipping containers on his property in the central area, master plan area. This is a very urban location. He actually owns the single fund and lives in a single family home. And he's storing the containers on an adjacent parcel. You can't see it in the cereal. It's an older era, but they're basically right here, right here. Again, it's a result of an enforcement action. He did come in and respond to that enforcement action and applied for the special use permits. We put the enforcement action on hold. Since that time, we have been unable after multiple attempts via email, phone call and even visiting the site. It's not too far from City Hall, in fact, to gain feedback as required. I haven't got anything back from the applicant. He has not had his neighborhood meeting due to all that staff recommends denial.
And we could not approve it anyway due to the lack of a public meeting, correct? Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to deny case number SP two zero two two dash zero eight nine. As a result of the applicant not holding a neighborhood meeting, nor did they answer Q and A.
Motion made for denial for reasons set forth by the maker of the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Straws, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Beth.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of SP two thousand and twenty two dash zero eight nine. Subject to due to the fact that the applicant has been unresponsive to the draft staff report. And did not hold a neighborhood meeting passes five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, January twenty sixth to seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. With that and with Janet's permission, that will conclude our normal business. Is that correct, Janet?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, we do need to elect chairman and vice chair for the planning commission for two thousand and twenty three, so I will now open the floor for nominations. Commissioner Straws.
I nominate Chairman Carson as chairperson. Sister Karen Jones as the vice chairperson, such as already done before.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ernst. Do you have another nomination or are you saying?
Just seconding.
All right, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, can we just take a vote for against the motion on the floor? So all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose, any opposed?
No.
Janet was opposed?
Any voting members.
I'm sorry, Janet, that motion passes regardless. Somebody will have to deliver the bad news to Armstrong, Miller, Connolly and Polly. That you were that you were outvoted. Now, unless Janet wants us to stay any longer, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you all. Appreciate you all being here. All right, thanks a lot, everyone.
You all.
Patrick Gunner, thank you. Well, not so much Gunner, but only half half thanks to you.